About to listen to?
Um, I'd like to raise a procedural issue at the outset that the second agenda item is inappropriately listed on the agenda tonight.
That's, that's, we'll get into that.
And I respectfully request to be heard and object to going forward with this meeting when this item should not be even on the agenda tonight.
Understood.
I think that needs to be resolved first.
Understood, but thank you. Does anybody else have anything that doesn't relate to the hearings, any of the hearings tonight? No? Okay. So, we're gonna, we're gonna open up the first hearing, which is a joint hearing between the planning board and the central business architectural board. And let me just walk you through what's going to happen. We're gonna open up the hearing and have a presentation from the applicant to both boards. There's gonna be a lot of questions, give and take between the boards and the applicant, and it'll be an internal discussion, give and take. When that process has been exhausted, then we will go up to the public comment section of the evening, and we'll, and we'll listen to what everybody has to say. At that point, however, we are going to pretty much stop the hearing. We're gonna continue the hearing. We can't make a decision tonight because there are CPA funds tied into this potential development. And one of the contingencies that came along with the funding was that a separate meeting with the CPA in a public setting has to be held outside of this meeting. So, we can discuss what's gonna, what this project's all about, the pros and cons and so forth, but we can't make a decision. So, you're gonna have at least two other opportunities to address what may or may not be concerning you with, at the CPA meeting, and then I expect everybody's gonna be back here again in January, either another joint committee or separate, separate meeting. So, um, so this isn't the end of the process. We're near the end of the process, but no decision will be made tonight, so I just wanna make that clear. So, with that said, I'd like to open up, scheduled for seven o'clock, CBAC Architectural Permit and Site Plan Review for Demolition of Existing and Construction of a New Four Story 69,785 Square Foot Mixed Residential Commercial Building, 256 Pleasant Street, North Hampton Map ID 32C-171, as published on November 26th and December 4th. So, we have a, an applicant with a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Campbell, and I'm the Executive Director of Valley Community Development Corporation, a local nonprofit here in North Hampton, whose primary goal is to develop affordable housing. We're here tonight to present our plans for the redevelopment of the North Hampton Lumberyard into 55 units of rental housing, along with commercial space along Pleasant Street and Holyoke Street. I just wanted to mention that we've had a number of community meetings, we, with interested parties, some individual meetings. We've had, um, meetings with the abutters, with property owners and business owners and other interested community members. The Ward Three Napid Association had invited us to their annual meeting in October, which was an informal meeting, which we attended. With their help, we sponsored two meetings, October 30th, at, one at the Chamber and one at Bridge Street School. And as a follow-up to those meetings, we had another meeting last week at Beehive Sewing with business abutters and other property owners in the area. As the chairman mentioned, we applied for CPA funds. One of the conditions, assuming it's approved, is that we should have another meeting with the community, and I have set a date for that and had found a location, so that meeting will be held on Monday, December 29th, at the Collaborative on Holly Street at 6:00 PM, and I'll be sending out notices this week for that meeting. One thing we heard very clearly from many of the abutters is more commercial space on the first floor, and we are interested in having further discussions regarding that. But I do wanna say that the site plan that we've submitted and the information for the CBAC, those further discussions would not affect the site plan that we've submitted. I, we have our development team here today. We have representatives from the architectural firm, landscape design and civil engineering, and I would like to ask Cliff Boomer, who is the architect for the project, to come up and make the presentation. Thank you.
Cliff, before you jump in, just one procedural note. Alan, you had something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to disclose that a number of years ago, I'm not sure when, five to 10, between five and 10 years ago perhaps, I was on the board of the CDC for a couple of years.
I would say it's more than five years ago, but I don't know off the bat.
Yeah, definitely more than five. So, I understand from Carolyn, I'm still eligible to sit here, but I guess if anyone has objections, they can voice them.
If anyone has an issue with Alan's impartiality, just raise your hand, and he can recuse himself. We don't think it's gonna be an issue, but we need to make it clear.
We should announce a test already now.
Right, we have one member that's already recused herself as well, Tess, who's a local abutter to the project. So, anybody have any issues with Alan? No? Okay. Cliff, you're up.
Thank you very much. I'm Cliff Boomer. I'm a principal at Davis Square Architects and working with the CDC. And tonight with me is Imad Zrane, who is a civil engineer, and Walter Kednifsky, who's our landscape architect, who actually was the author of the Central Business District Guidelines a number of years ago. But what I'd like to do, I'll run through, we have two state slide shows. One of them is the, for the Central Business District, and that's the first one I'll run through, because I think that gives the overall feeling and character and inspiration for the building, and then move over into the planning board set, which is a little more technically oriented. But I'll try and run through them fairly quickly. Cover a lot of territory, leave lots of time for questions unless you want to interrupt with questions, whichever way you wanna do it is fine.
See how it goes, and then we'll...
So, the first thing I wanted to talk about is, is the inspiration for the site, which is pretty self-evident. I think it stands at a really prominent location on Pleasant Street from the south. It's a real gateway that's visible before you hit the curve on Pleasant Street as it, as it shifts to the west a little bit. And from the downtown end, from the more densely, densely developed end, it's also a real marker for the, for the end of that district and a first step for implementing the Central Business District Guidelines and layout invasion for the quality of that street. So, the, we spent a lot of time studying the guidelines, because we did find it was really, really providing a lot of great material for us to work with in the design of the building. The fundamentals of the building, I think you may already know, but maybe not everybody knows, it's, we're proposing 55 residential home development and two, two substantial commercial spaces, one right on Pleasant Street, the other on Holyoke Street. The Holyoke Street space is about 2,500 square feet that we believe will house the Community Development Corporation, Valley CDC. The tenant for the Pleasant Street space, which is about 1,500 square foot, is currently laid out, hasn't been designated yet, but we've laid the space out in a way that we think it will be very attractive for a number of developers or tenants. Now, just say one more thing. I think one of our, Joanne mentioned a lot of the meetings that, that we've gone to, and we went to one last week, it was a week ago tonight, and met with a lot of the local business owners on Pleasant Street. I would say uniformly, there was a high degree of confidence in the ability of Pleasant Street to develop up to this kind of density. And as Joanne pointed out, the, the main comment we did hear from the attendees at that meeting was, provide more commercial space, which we do have, we have a pretty decent sized footprint. So, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move a little closer, because some of these things I wanna read. I, I wanna quote some from, or at least really make a lot of direct references to the guidelines, because we really did pay a lot of attention to those. We see this as, because of where it sits on, on Pleasant Street, it, it wants to fit in with the theme building, and its design is such, as far as the overall height of the building, percentage of lazy, references to nearby historic buildings. I'm sure, and these two images were picked for obvious reasons, the upper image is a nice rounded turret on the building, with some ornamental horizontal lines that break up the height of the building and provide a lot of visual interest. The frontage below is actually from the rooftop of that existing lumberyard showroom, the low, the low building that, that was first demolished to make way. And I think that, that looks towards the north, and that's really the area of opportunity for, you know, for the, the guidelines for being fulfilled, all the space that does exist to create the pedestrian-friendly type of environment that you're talking about. We could look at that next slide, but there are a number of points. I think some, I'll just pick out a couple of things. I think if you, if you look at the bottom three area there for the theme, theme buildings, we talked about, it talks about no setbacks, so really minimizing setbacks, except where there's a view to a public space, which we have created. If you look at the render, oh, I'm sorry. We have on the right-hand side of our building, we've pulled it back from the adjacent historic building and created a public plaza, which is actually where the residential entry is. The shape of the building is rounded, and you'll see better once you start looking at the site plan, there's a slight curvature to the front of the building. I mean, you see the kind of funny shape, it kind of is really an understatement. A very oddly shaped frontage we have, the curve was a way for us to really maximize frontage on the street, get some visible frontage, and to relate to some of the other buildings in North Hampton, and as I said, create that kind of gateway from the south. I think a lot of these, we looked at rather religiously. I think there's an interesting one, new theme buildings, which are wider than tall, should be vertically divided, and you can certainly see in some of the existing fabric, the notion of taking blocks and dividing it vertically is exactly what we are trying to accomplish with our building, is create some interest and break that scale down vertically. Other points, and there's a lot of things that you, you folks all know about, the putting symmetrically organized windows, typical windows being organized, having tall proportions. We do have gang windows, and you'll see the reference for those. Also, taking some references from nearby buildings, and you'll see, I think it's in the next slide, the choice of where our sign band is. The notion of heavily glazed first floor with a, kind of a traditionally based sign, sign band was important to us. I won't go through all these, but we can go to, there's a lot of... So, this is a building right across the street on Holyoke Street, and we see our building as a kind of, these are the two buildings that are immediately, well, they're on the same side of the street as we are, that we saw a lot of inspiration in. Our building has two different brick colors. We're taking one brick color from this building and adding some horizontal lines with a darker brick on this piece. This is a building right across Holyoke with large gang windows on it, very simple. Neither of these buildings have a lot of elaborate, tiny, detailed masonry, but we sure wanted to get a lot of masonry into our building, and as I said, really maximize that base, get as much masonry on the street as we could. Some of the fundamentals, rooftop equipment hidden, which we will do, we have our, our tallest part of our building is 52 feet tall. I think you know the guidelines. The guidelines don't quite jive with the zoning, but the guidelines say the theme building should be between 30 and 55 feet tall. Ours is 52 feet tall, up to the top of that parapet. We do use decorative corbelled parapets on the building, and as well as lintels and sills. We've taken the horizontal line for our sign band directly off of our neighbor's building, and we're really trying to, because, as you know, the kind of fabric, it's kind of piecing. The further you move down the street, it kind of, the fabric breaks up. So, we're kind of trying to make a, grab a cross to this building to engage it in a larger composition, to help get a kind of critical mass, to help, as I said, start that new, new opportunity for other theme buildings north of us on Pleasant Street. These are just some nearby buildings with some of the building heights and features that we liked. Again, the kind of rounded parapet with some horizontal decorations. This is just right up the street from us, same side of the street, a rounded corner. This is the building right across from us on Holyoke Street that we looked at the straight-on elevation before, which also is beveled, going around the corner. This is close to us, it's about 40, I didn't actually measure it, but it's, I think it's between 44, 48 feet tall. Again, the highest point of ours is 52 feet. Here's our neighbor just to the south, and then right across the street where the coffee shop is and the Beehive. But those are our neighbors. Just to make that point, I, I think probably everybody here knows that, but there, there are some variances with the guidelines and the actual zoning. The zoning actually does say the building can be as high as 70 feet. We're of course nowhere near that. The commercial space is a minimum of 20 feet. We're deeper than that considerably. The amount of commercial space we have on both of our streets exceeds by about 50% what the minimum would be. No minimum parking requirement, we actually have 41 parking spaces on the site, located primarily around the back of the building. Here's the site plan, and I, I'm not gonna go into huge detail about it, because I have two guys here who, who really worked more on the site plan than I did. But this is that, a little park area that we've created, the main residential entry is off of that park. We also created another open space along Short Street. Short Street is not a town or a city street, it's a private street, so we really don't have any access privileges on that street, but we wanted to make it something that certainly could be a nice amenity, assuming that the other owners along Short Street were supportive of that. The parking is oriented back along the railroad tracks and wraps around in, in this fashion. There are multiple entries into the building. This is the space that would be occupied by the CDC, by Valley, and this is the, as we had on designated, commercial space. We have bike parking, but again, I don't wanna step on Walt's or Imad's better detailed description of the site plan. Although, I will, I'll point out, that's the very awkward, you can see how the curve of the building is really following the lines of this kind of strange frontage that we do have. And in fact, I think you can all figure that out, that from a design perspective, it's a very challenging shape of a site, given how, the small amount of actual frontage. That line right across there is only 45 feet wide. Oh, I'm sorry, I should've made a few more comments, just so you can see the organization of the building, without going into great detail. That's a commercial space on Pleasant Street. This is the main residential entry. We have units that, dwelling units that start along the back, they're raised up some, because through our little park, we created a cut across, but we wanted to have, make sure that these homeowner, or, well, the renters, but these people were adequately up off of the pavement, so that people weren't looking right in the windows as they walked through. So, we have some units there and, and lining them along the back. The, the first floor apartments all have individual entries. We did that to liven up the street facade, so it would have, have a little nicer detail and have more eyes on the street. And we're really hoping that we will get people who will find it very pleasant to walk through the site, either to cut through to Short Street or, or cut through and come out on, cut through from Holyoke. This is going to be the public entry to a community room. We're planning a community room that the CDC wants to make available to the public for use, so we're actually hoping to see a lot of nighttime use, not just office hour use in the, in the CDC. Upper floor is fairly straightforward. It's a little narrower than most. Again, the site is kind of challenging, so it's a double-loaded building, it's actually a little bit narrower than most. You can see we flipped the units up there sideways, so that we could narrow up the building to make sure we could fit parking along the back. And also, you know, when you, kind of the first thing on the block, as far as, you know, looking ahead to when there might be denser development, you don't really know what's gonna happen. We know the guidelines, and we know the zoning, so we know what could happen to the west of us. So, we did pull our building back enough so that, to ensure that if this, if these areas ever do get more densely developed, that our residents will still have plenty of air and light into their apartments. These are the, the major facades of the building. This is, of course, we've removed the other buildings on Pleasant Street, so you can see that. The main materials were used, and I did bring a board, which, you want me to show you the material board? We haven't 100% selected colors yet, but these are the basic, basic palette of materials. I'll point them out here first, and then I can show you where they're applied on the elevations. So, we are using brick. As I said, we want to start with using a brick color from our adjacent building, the little gable-end building to our south, and then have a highlighting brick that creates the banding on our building for the, for some visual interest. The, the main facades will be brick and then a lucabond, which is a very high-quality metal panel. We're thinking right now probably something like this color. This I brought, because it's just a sample of the material, actually, to show you, it's a composite material, but it's a lifetime metal panel. For other areas, and once we're wrapped around, I think it's right to about there, we switch over to a high-density semiticious paneling material, which is what this is. I put two colors here, because we're really not sure which of the colors we're talking about at this point. You see a lot of this material being used these days, it's, what we're proposing is actually even a higher-density version of it that has a, it's a solid color throughout the material. We're looking at some of our detailing, creating reveals, so essentially where we don't have metal panels, we'll detail a lot of the semiticious product to look very similar to the panel material. Most of the body of the, of the residential wing, we're looking at a lap siding material that made of the same semiticious material. The, a couple of other things you can see on here, and then we can go to the next one. But we do use bays, as you know, along Pleasant Street, there are a lot of buildings that have, articulate the length of the building using bays to cut out into it. In this case, we're creating a kind of attic story, and then interrupting that with vertical bays, you know, within the, within the dwelling units. But it's a very typical, so these are all four of our elevations. This is looking across the courtyard there, that's one of the entries just off the courtyard. But this is kind of our main view, right across the street, I guess, kind of from where the Beehive is. But we're, the idea is to really maximize a non-residential frontage, whether it's retail or some other form of commercial, we wanted to really maximize that, then create this pathway that's about 12 feet wide at the narrowest point, that leads the residents back, come by foot. Pedestrian off of Pleasant Street can enter the building off of there. So, we see it as very carefully lit, and to be a very warm, attractive space, and open to the public as well. That might be the last one. Oh, no, these are some other renderings. So, this is, again, this is the CDC space. This is not our parking lot, this is the parking lot that belongs to the eye care store right on the corner, so that's not our parking. This is the access into our site along the side, which is where you saw that setback. Our entry into the parking is back there, and this is where the CDC space is on Holyoke space, uh, street. And some constructed views here, obviously looking from the north. There's our sign band that we were lining with the brick building to our south. There's the optical center there, and this is the former Breaking Building. And then the view from the south, looking up, and you know, there's the optical shop again, neighborhood of the south, and then our building and Breaking. And I think you can see that it's a, well, this is what I said at the very, very beginning, it's really a prominent site from both directions, north and from south, north and south. And there's our view right down Holyoke Street. Again, we don't know what's gonna happen, and that's okay, that's okay. Again, we, I think it's, it was very important to us to make sure that this building is pushed back far enough in, in case there is a denser development that happens there. And I will say that as, before we switch over to the site planning now, the, we are taking a lot of effort to make sure we don't have visible mechanical equipment, because we're very much aware that that elevation from, from Pleasant Street looking to the east really is visible, and so we are gonna make sure that we have all of that well, well hidden. One other point, and I missed, I went right by it, but there was, it was in the design guidelines, another important point, but it's come up in some of our meetings, is people have been concerned about building a nice new building and then having air conditioners hanging out the windows, which we won't have. It is gonna be a centrally air-conditioned building, there will not be air conditioners allowed. We're using metal-clad wood windows. It is important, I do have to note that we're, you know, we're in a very schematic design phase as far as the, the real details of the building. It will be a very sustainable building, all the buildings we do at very minimum meet a lead silver level, and we've got lots of ideas. And we'll be, of course, who knows where the code's gonna be two years, we haven't even seen the new stretch code yet, so I'm anticipating that the building will be even more sustainable than what you see built today in stretch code communities. So, with that, we'll flip over to site plan to Walter and to Imad.
Good evening, my name is Imad Zrane from the Valley Zrane, so I'm a professional civil engineer. I'll quickly just go over the existing conditions of the site. The site is about an acre and a quarter, and it's, it's about a, it's an L, kind of an L shape. It has some frontage on Pleasant Street, about 45 feet, and the biggest, the bigger frontage, about 115, 15 feet on Holyoke. There's a few buildings that's currently located on-site, and then the majority of the site is either building or, or parking. With current vehicular access to the yard is right off Holyoke Street. One prominent things identified this site is an existing arch culvert that's owned by the city. It's, was built by, back in 1800, and obviously would have to be located, and we're working with DPW on that, to relocate that, that culvert. As far as the, you know, the site plan, as Cliff mentioned, the, you know, the building is an L-shaped building with vehicular access, pretty much close to where the existing curb cut is. We purposely located... We purposely located the curb cut with some kind of a curve along the roadway to lead into a 41 parking spaces, so it doesn't look -- as you're driving down Holyoke, if you look into the site, it doesn't look like it's a massive parking lot. We're proposing sidewalks all around the building, site lighting, as well as the two courtyard areas, one in this location and a bigger one in that location. As far as utilities is concerned and drainage, we've filed with the city for a stormwater permit application, which we've received, a permit with some conditions. And today, I think we received letter from DPW with some, basically some comments, which we have no issues with them. They're pretty straightforward. As I mentioned, the existing site is almost currently impervious, 100% almost. We're reducing that impervious with some green space. You know, for the drainage, we're providing actually sheet flow into a -- some kind of a swale that leads into a rain garden that we planted up with, you know, various plants, and eventually all our drainage will end up in the existing arch culvert that currently all the drainage goes there now. We'll be proposing all new utilities, water and sewer from Pleasant. We had a meeting with DPW, and they do require we rebuild the sidewalk along all our frontage, so we're rebuilding the sidewalk along -- our Holyoke frontage was about 115 feet, and also along Pleasant Street. We're rebuilding the entire sidewalk, resetting the curb. Subsequent to this plan, you know, we had a request, I think from planning, to extend the sidewalk on Pleasant Street, and we have provided a sketch that shows that. Basically, this is a revision to the initial submission that we did. Initially, we had the sidewalk only along our frontage, and then now we're showing it extended a certain distance of, I think, about 40 feet or so. We did submit part of the package, a lighting plan, acceptable for the metric, and we're going to be using pretty much -- I'd say they're cutoff fixtures, dark sky compliant, and these are sample photos of the actual poles we'll be using and the actual fixtures. Some of them will be in the parking lot, and some actually be hanging off the building along the sidewalks. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Walter, just to talk a little bit about the landscaping.
I'll make the comments brief and leave any questions. One of the fortuitous qualities of the site is that it creates a southeast pocket. Climatically, it's the most ideal outdoor space. It's where you get morning sun and warmth, and that's where we put the main entrance to the housing, and where people can gather. And so there are, in fact, two versions of the southeast pocket. The one for the playground up along Short Street is another creation of a southeast pocket, which will be warm early in the day, shaded later in the day, and protected from winds. So both of those places are pretty ideal for the outdoor landing places. The site, as already has been said, is pretty small, and so making use of all of it in a fortuitous way. One of the things that we've done along the way, you may have, in fact, in your packet plans, that show additional green in small pieces around the site. And with any kind of pressure at all, small pieces of green tend to take a lot of abuse. And so the effort here was to, for instance, along the east side of the building, where you see no green, is to create the sidewalk and make it hardscape where less light is anyway, and to aggregate the green into bigger spaces so that we can, in fact, do a couple of things. Create enough space for some sizable trees, small and full-canopy scale trees, to scale the building and the space, and to provide shade for the sitting areas and play areas, and to allow them to both survive and create greater interest. Ahmad has already pointed out that we've done subtle things. It's a site where small things can make a big difference. The subtle curve to the driveway entering features the green, both at the end, straight ahead and to the right, and at both sides of the entrance and arrival. So you're creating a green gateway to the project, and subtle differences like that march you away from the typical, maybe motel-like or shopping-center-like parking that's going on, even in a scale like this. And we played, as you might imagine, along the way with different versions, even with this tight plan, of flipping the parking so the parking was, at one point, looked at closer to the building and driving away towards the railroad track on the far east of the site. And we ended up with recommending this scheme. They both had their advantages, but in this way, we present the building, keep sacrosanct pedestrian space. You turn away, park your car, and walk to the building, of course, across the parking lot, but it's not that many cars going in and out. Some other key things, as already has been said, and we can go into detail, this is an advanced schematic, but we certainly will have infiltration if we can have the budget afforded in terms of the paving as well as the rain gardens. And we are going to be using primarily native plants, to the extent that they can be masked so that they can survive and look good in all seasons. And we were, of course, will consider summer and winter impact. There is amenity here, certainly for the users of this site, but also for the neighborhood. The park is envisioned for maybe even the school people across the street to come and use it on occasion. People are imagined to be sitting in this ideal outdoor southeast pocket, and there are benches and opportunities for that being provided. In a lot of ways, one of the things that makes me interested in and excited about the project is it really is converting a kind of backdoor situation, the back entrance to the former lumberyard, into a front door. So this entire property will no longer be the back space, but it is, as already has been said, contributing to the front space. It's adding depth to Pleasant Street. It's just not a facade any longer. It's a project that by material, by geometry, by careful articulation of space, extends depth from Pleasant Street back into the thing, very much in accord with the design guidelines that we want -- we're writing for this plan. Those are key things, I think, that we need to say. There's an overall effort at fit. In my view, there's a critical mass here that will allow vitality to be a part of this end of the street, and it's something very much in the interest of Northampton and I think all the planning that goes on here. So with that, I'll leave the rest for questions.
Okay. Do you want to start on your own in the architectural line?
Sure. Thank you for your presentation. It was good to hear that you took the guidelines to heart. I do have a few questions. I thought, just for the general public, who may not come to these meetings very often, that I would just read the purpose of the design guidelines. A new building's architectural character should respect the existing historic character of adjacent buildings and of the downtown as a whole. Its character should be consistently developed throughout its design, articulation, and detailing. By closely following the design guidelines presented in this manual, a building should result which blends compatibly into the downtown architectural fabric. It is one of the purposes of this manual to encourage the creation of theme buildings and new construction for the downtown district. Achieving and maintaining a critical mass of theme buildings is key to retaining and enhancing the well-defined street spaces which give downtown its distinctive coherent character. Construction of new theme buildings is appropriate for most building sites in the downtown district. So there's a number of guidelines which you went over. I had a few questions on each guideline, or not each one, but a few of them. So you talked a little bit about the setbacks and about the Pocket Park, which I think is a wonderful addition. I think I'm a little bit concerned about the curve, and you talked about the awkwardness of your property lines, which is understandable, but I'm not sure that the curve is inviting or creates a plaza that invites people to have a gathering space. So I just wanted to -- just the curve piece of it, if you could talk about that a little bit.
I think it's, again, I think at the very beginning, I was talking about the high visibility of that site from both directions, and the curve really helps you see more of that masonry facade from both directions because it does wrap around and helps face further south and further north. The invitation into the little Pocket Park on the south side, what we were trying to do there is, as a respectful gesture to our neighboring historic building, was really pull it away and expose a wall that's been -- that wall was, in fact, originally exposed. There are bricked-in window openings on that building, and having that be able to stand a little bit proud when you view it from the side, we think is -- both enhances the original historic building, but also provides a little invitation back into that courtyard. So we did try a lot of different other shapes for the main corner of the building, and really, in the end, decided that this one really was kind of sending the best sign. It maximized our street frontage on a very awkward, narrow site and gave us an opportunity to really use a lot of masonry, we think, in a way that's compatible.
I guess one of the things that is different from any other building in downtown Northampton, unless you can tell me otherwise, is the stepping back of the metal panel section from the brick panel. And I understand that you're doing that in order to give more verticality to the building, but it's not something that you typically see in Northampton. And in fact, the materials that face onto the main streets are supposed to be predominantly masonry, and I wouldn't call that facade or the other facade predominantly masonry.
Could I add a couple of things? The verticality, of course, is one of the pieces of the guideline, to emphasize the verticality. I want to go back to the anomaly piece, the building that curves, that's an anomaly. We've seen it in one of the other examples that was just shown, and that catches your attention, and the idea here is to really catch one's attention. But what hasn't been said yet is, by doing this, the prime view coming from Northampton downtown towards the building presents two sides of the building really clearly. And when you see the volume of the building, it has greater presence than as a facade. So there's an opportunity going on here, especially from exiting the community, to really make this building a feature and draw attention to it at one corner, and then it immediately steps back into the orthogonal geometry of the remainder and fits. So it's -- the specialists of that piece of commercial real estate and that building and the visibility of it is really working nicely, so adding only to what has been said.
I think if you want to go to that view, the view from downtown Northampton, since that's what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm. It's further in. Oh, no, wrong direction. Yeah, the other direction.
That view.
Yeah.
So like you have said often that that corner is like the corner that you view from downtown Northampton, and to me, it's kind of a blank corner. That corner doesn't make a statement. I don't think that it draws you into the building, and the way that the materials change from brick to the fiber cement looks to be a flush transition. There's no stepping, or it's just two pieces, two materials butting up against each other. It feels like there's an opportunity here for detail that's not provided.
No, I see what you're saying on the north elevation where the two materials come together. But if you don't mind, I'll keep talking about the curve a little bit more, too, because I think this is a view where you can really see that by pulling it back the way we did, you get a much nicer view of the building to the south, and we let the sign band continue around as a way to be an indicator of where the pedestrian entry is into the little courtyard. What happens if you square that elevation off? First of all, we don't have the real estate because you saw the shape of the site, so if you square that tower off in the front, it gets very small, in fact, and the proportions really don't look too good. We did do a lot of studies of more rectilinear plans, and they really weren't doing the trick for us.
Well, let me ask why those groupings of windows on the north facade that are within the brick are stepped back from the face?
Mainly just for the -- to create a greater sense of volume of the masonry. That was really the reason, to give a little more massedness, so it didn't appear to be just a skin. You know, I think that -- I think it is important to think about what happens in the future, too, that we don't really know. I mean, where the Break King is now may be put to very good use for as long as any of us are still alive, but we know it can actually happen there, and they do have a lot more frontage that could come up and, in fact, pretty much be in alignment with the corner of our building. You don't really know. But we're very open, and I'm very sensitive to what you said, too, because I think having change in materials is a real opportunity for some more articulation. I think that's exactly how we should use it, is an opportunity for articulation, and I -- we can develop that design further where that juncture happens on the north side.
Okay, and while we're looking at this view, which is one of the -- in guideline number two, is that the street facade finestration should be designed to appear to be at least two stories high, and here it seems a little bit low, although in some of your other renderings it seemed higher. Did you move it up?
Well, it's been moving up and down a little bit. We're at about 13 feet, right? You are -- you're right, it's a little bit low, and we can go higher because we can go up to, certainly up to the sill height of the first level of apartments. We're really mainly driven by matching the line on the adjacent, nearby building to the south, but I don't disagree in any way. I think we can take up more space with the commercial facade.
Well, it seems like in this view that it's actually sort of below that horizontal line on the adjacent building, like that you've started the band below that.
I think that's because it's set back a little bit. I don't think it is if you look at the string on elevation, but I hear your point. And in fact, when you do look at the typical sign band in downtown, many of them do go right up to the sill height of the first residential floor, so I agree with that point.
The guidelines talk about the -- we talked about why you stepped back the facade so that you could emphasize the verticality, but the guidelines talk about building in piers into the facade or other details in the brick so that there's some dimension to the brick facade, and this is -- it's a very flat brick facade with not a whole lot of dimension to it. Is there a reason why?
I think the best way to understand that is to look at the building that's right across Holyoke Street. There's a building that does exactly what you said with some prominent piers and larger openings, and we were taking those kinds of proportions. Yeah, there you go. We had a straight-on view of that one, too, but that -- we don't need to go that far back. The building in the upper right-hand corner is that kind of grid of piers, and we came very close to matching the scale of that. We don't have quite that level of dimensionality like that does. Those are proud by eight or 10 inches. Ours are more, ours are only set back six inches or four inches.
But there are no piers within the masonry?
Well, actually, you should go to the front. Go back to the front. We had a view where we were -- well, that's a good -- yeah, so that's actually the site, but it's the same grid pattern. You're right, they're not proud of the rest of the elevation.
There's no brick that stepped back from other brick?
No, but the guideline that we were actually looking at the most was the discussion about the detail, matching the detail of nearby historic buildings, and actually, both the one immediately next to us, that certainly one immediately next to us is pretty glad. We can provide more articulation if we really think it's beneficial. And I'd also say that I think our attitude in the guidelines was to try to not really imitate things, right? And we've taken, I guess, echoes of things that we see. I think certainly having the, you know, lintels, a clear expression of lintels, of sills, that was important. But we could certainly introduce some more articulation, but again, I think we want to be careful about not getting to a point to be careful about not getting to a point where we're creating a building that really genuinely looks like nothing that's ever happened here, or it's a weak imitation of something, so.
In terms of the entrances into your commercial spaces, there's supposed to be some sort of recess that happens at that location, but it appeared in the plans that the entrances were flush with the laced.
It's an overhang, the the band around the corner is an overhang, so it is a, it is a recess. It's not built in the way that you would build into a historic storefront, a recess, it goes in, but the sign band overhangs. If you look at the second floor plan, you can see the overhang. Let me check that, what to do with my pointer.
Maybe I was looking at, at the plan, do you seem to indicate that it was flush with the?
So this is a, yeah, that.
Yeah, that overhangs. So the sign band becomes a vertical reference for the recess in the building.
It's almost like a marker.
Yeah. So that's what I'm talking about right there. This is.
So there's a sign.
So the pushback on the right-hand piece combined with the sign band, sign band origins across, and this is a recess. So there you're looking at that side wall. So we don't, it isn't cut into the storefront, there's an overhang that creates a recess.
It seems like there's a, I guess I'm looking at the plan and not seeing that.
Yeah, you don't see it, but you have to look at the next level.
Basically, you have your building up here, and this is just.
So the actual entrance to the storefront is behind this line?
There's a recess. It comes out. Or it's a low ridge. So it is set back, it's not set back into the storefront, but it is set back from the line of the roof above.
Oh, so it's a street the overhang?
Yeah, it's an interpretation of it, it's not, it's not that kind of place.
Not like this.
No.
Okay. Guideline five, which is about roofs, so I understand that, and apparently no, no roofs are are visible. You talked about that large parapet which has punched openings, and that is where I presume you're trying to hide the mechanical equipment.
It is.
But you haven't shown any drawings that show the mechanical equipment, and will you really be able to hide it in that location?
We will be able to. We haven't shown any because we don't have the tenants. The mechanical equipment that will be in that part of the building is largely for the tenant space, and we don't really know what's going to be up there, but we're configured close. We can't, I mean, take those guidelines literally.
I actually, the the punched openings is something that is not something I've seen in downtown Northampton buildings before, other than the parking garage, and I'm not sure that they're appropriate in in terms of the scale of this building, and it feels a little bit like wasted space. I understand you're trying to hide the mechanical equipment, but I also understand that there's concern about the perceived height of this building being too tall, and if there were a way that the mechanical equipment could be located elsewhere so you couldn't see it, wouldn't it be possible to bring the cornice down similar to the way that you have it on Holyoke Street?
It would be.
Without the punched openings?
Yeah, it would be, and actually, that makes it easier to create the sightlines to hide the equipment.
We we talked about this a little bit more, but I'm going to just read this, section six on articulation. New buildings or additions may be articulated by means of bays, turrets, recesses, columns, large arched openings, et cetera, designed in a stylistically consistent manner. Such articulation should be designed to be compatible with other downtown historic buildings, especially those which are adjacent or nearby. Please describe how this design is compatible with other downtown historic buildings, and how does it relate, do you think, overall to the context of Northampton? And what features did you incorporate into your design so that it would be stylistically consistent?
Well, without going back to all the design guidelines that I highlighted, I think we tried to follow it quite literally, with respect to the patterns of windows, vertical alignment of windows, symmetrical patterning of windows, horizontal alignment of windows, alignment of some of the features with adjacent buildings, which we did with our neighboring building, large use of masonry. There is a section in the guidelines about use of ornamental metal and corbeled parapet areas, percentage of the glass on the first floor dedicated to use to maximize in the commercial frontage on the first floor, proportions of the building, making the vertical split so that we have largely vertically oriented proportions as opposed to a square facade. The height of the building is consistent with the historic buildings. The setbacks, we think, are consistent with the historic buildings. You know, I think what we're trying to do is interpret what a 2015 theme building actually is, because there are going to be a lot of other buildings built up the street and in other areas in Northampton. So we're trying to be sensitive to building technology, the way buildings are built now, and yet following the guidelines as closely as we can, making our modern interpretation of the guidelines.
The first floor facade, it talks about how there's supposed to be a bulkhead of about twelve inches and nor more than thirty inches on glazed facades. The south or Holyoke Street elevation does not seem to represent these requirements. Why did you choose to do that?
The Pleasant Street side, so what we did, we did that with metal panels, actually, as pieces, rather than doing a stone base, we used metal panels.
Yeah, I see that you did it on Pleasant Street. I was wondering why you didn't do it on Holyoke Street?
Oh, we can do it on Holyoke Street, if, that's not, we're not wed to that. We haven't, we haven't really advanced the design for the CDC. I would say one of the more interesting pieces of design that remains has to do with ensuring that we have, and without going into too great a detail, this has to be an accurate entry at this, because we want to invite the public into the building, because it's a very public institution in there. There's actually almost a four-foot grade change from one end of the site, south to north. So the, whether we're going to make, what's drawn in the plans now that are up for review now, we showed an exterior ramping structure that takes you back into where the community room is. We're also going to be studying, and remember, we haven't started the work in it, and this building probably won't be permitted for two years, so we've got a lot of time to work on some of these details. The, we're also thinking about an internal ramping system, so I think the the fair answer to that is, we really haven't fully designed this yet, because we're not exactly sure where the entry into the CDC will be, and we're certainly happy to leave that open for future review.
The next, section eight, goes into a lot of detail about the windows, and you've talked a little bit about that. I was wondering if you, if, it it talks about there being a symmetrical and rhythmic pattern to the windows, and I was wondering, you've broken it down internally, is there a certain pattern to it?
Very much following the guidelines. So what we were trying to do is take the building at the corner of Holyoke and think of a way to really use the kind of powerful proportions of that building, which is why we did do gang openings, which exist in a lot of other buildings in Northampton. But we did respect the guidelines as far as window width versus intervening masonry areas, so I mean, the pattern is what you see, it's horizontally gridded and vertically aligned.
Okay. It looks like in this elevation or rendering is, it's different, you had a six-over-one pattern in the windows?
Oh, the muntin pattern?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay, then it, that's what we were imagining most of the windows, is a six-over-one.
I I actually prefer that to the six-over-one. The six-over-one seems very residential, and if you do see that, that type of grid pattern, it's usually a six-over-six, or you don't have a a six-over-one pattern on a four-story building, at least. I haven't seen that often, if ever.
I don't think we're entirely wed to the muntin pattern.
I'm almost done.
I'm just getting warmed up.
You talked about the windows, so on this facade, I guess you've changed this, in the the submission that we received, you did not have masonry lintels or sills, but you would intend to have those.
Oh, we definitely do with that, yeah. You know, I think, again, without beating a, 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 we were, we really didn't think we were in the business of imitation, so we really are trying to to wed what we see as the future of the buildings that we're going to be reviewing with, you know, the beautiful history of buildings, too, which is why we're really focused on proportions and not really trying to replicate, but trying to grab the things that we think are the, are some of the best qualities of the historic buildings, which is what I think the guidelines focus on, the four or five really important aspects of the guidelines.
Well, I I think, you know, I understand that you're trying to build something new in the historic context of Northampton, and the guidelines, I think, appreciate the the historic fabric and recognize that that's what makes Northampton unique. And so I'm not quite sure that this building is is meeting all of the guidelines and trying to integrate into the fabric. I'm not opposed to modern architecture in any way, but I think that there are ways that you can reference historic features and still have a modern building, which, I guess I want to talk about materials, and and in particular, the the metal, this facade and the other facade, where we talk about the front facade being predominantly brick, but in this particular view, it's about half of the facade is brick, and I almost feel that it's, it's a little bit too busy to have the 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 fiber cement, and both fiber cement here in this case, right? There's no metal panels.
Right.
As the front facade, I'd almost prefer to see the front facade be a brick facade, even if there's stepping or piers. So it says, this is the front, and this is the the back. I, I, I'm hesitant on this board to approve something like this, because that sets a precedence for something that hasn't been done before, and so that, and to me, that doesn't represent what the the guidelines outline. So I guess I want to open up the opportunity to you to tell us why you think both this facade with the fiber cement and the facade with the metal panels represent historic features of Northampton, or relate to them in some way.
Well, I think that, well, it's two answers to that one, is that on this facade, it's actually, the next, from this, from there on, you go underneath the grade of the trestle into residential neighborhoods, I think we felt that this was an appropriate spot for a building that references, that directly references, in the residential.
And I would, I would almost believe that if it was inverted, and the brick was facing the more.
I hear what you're saying. But the metal panels, I think, you know, the guidelines are clear about there being the use of decorative metal panels, and again, I think we felt we're in the business of really interpreting the guidelines, and to us, using a very high-quality metal panel is, can be very nice, and in fact, I brought an image for you to look at.
I guess I'm not arguing that metal panels don't look nice. I don't think that they represent historical character or fabric of downtown Northampton.
Not as a facade.
I think the reference to metal panels is more like a metal cornice or detailing, not a full facade.
Just want to show you some, this is a building that we did do that combines exactly those metal panels with masonry, and the same idea of using some of lintels and sill treatment, so that it was kind of an ambiguous reference to historic construction along with the materials, but we really do believe there are ways to beautifully detail that that convey the same sense of care or craftsmanship and detail that that the smaller-scale modular construction does.
Those windows, show this down here a little bit.
Yeah, sorry.
These are the metal sections?
Yeah, so these are metal panels combined with masonry construction. We've done it, I, we actually worked very hard on it. I think I.
You know, in a, on the Pleasant Street facade, the larger metal portion of the building, as you draw it, it appears very plain. This has more articulation in it with breaks in the paneling.
Mm-hmm. Well, and this is a more developed design, too.
Okay, well, I'm saying, what you're showing us seems so basic and simple. I mean, again, it may be reproduction here and lighting and stuff, but I don't see any of that articulation on that, as well as the fact that you're breaking the window lines, there's only three windows on that. You see, the window alignments are, proportions change radically there between the the windows in the metal building and the brick building.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, design's personal, I just find that section is such an anomaly, and again, not carrying on the brick materials.
Well, we're happy to work with that. I think you can see in other parts of the building where we are creating shadow lines with the materials, it's, you know, these are not, they're not fully.
And just, just one comment I have, I mean, the curved facade building, you know, is a very strong geometric form, which I'm not opposed to. I personally have an issue with the striped brick. I mean, it's so uniform and very decorative. I think it tracks from the strength of the form of the of the geometry of the building. It just, I I have a, truly have an issue with the stripes. They're just so uniform, they kind of look like an attempt at poor postmodernism or something. I just, I don't think they're needed when you have such a strong-looking building. I think it attracts, I think it makes it look kind of clownish, not to be pejorative, but that's my feelings.
Again, it's, I'm open to subsequent review. There's no problem with that at all.
Yeah, I think one of the problems that I see here is that you really have two buildings side by side. One recognizes the nineteenth-century character of Northampton, the other is almost an Art Deco, an Art Moderne interpretation, almost an industrial building, and the fact that you've got them superimposed, it just creates a problem with me. I think that the the curve on the facade, I recognize, you know, your party on this that you have to do an L shape, and you have a very difficult corner to work with. I think that's creative, but I think the the fact that you've created, in effect, two buildings side by side really bothers me. I think I would rather see, even if you have a setback, if you could carry the same masonry around there and create a larger, wider building, and then that would say, you want to repeat the same type of windows, the same detailing coming onto that facade, so that when you split it, it really looks like it's one building. And also, I agree on the the horizontal striping, you know, that's, you know, Venetian, almost an Islamic characteristic that has nothing to do structurally, it's just decorative. I think if you used horizontal banding, say, at the sill or other lines like that, I think that might be a little more appropriate, and the examples that you've shown in Northampton do that, carry that through them. Also, I think that the the cornice with those windows up there, you're creating a real Potemkin village structure, and it really looks, looks bad, particularly on the elevation when you're looking to the south. And also, you talk about, you know, corbels and everything on the cornice. Your your rendering does not show any articulation, other than, you know, just the the cornice band itself. So I think that if you take a look at downtown Northampton, there are wonderful opportunities for creative design at the cornice. In fact, that's a, a Northampton characteristic, is to turn the masons loose and say, build me a beautiful cornice, and they would compete with each other, and you've negated that opportunity. Also, if you, if you go back to the the view, looking at this as you're heading out of town, that, that, to me, looks like a, you know, a Tuscan tower house. The proportions are just so vertical and narrow that it doesn't look like a real building. It really bothers me, particularly with the height of the parapet up there, I I think working that, bringing that. I, I think working that, bringing that down, is going to look a little bit better. And the, you know, the stripes, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think there's no reason to do that, other than, "Oh, let's put stripes on the building." Otherwise, the tradition is to follow certain lines, and I think if you work with that. Also, the way these two buildings work together, I, I think you, you've lost an opportunity to bring them together with the same window detailing, and particularly if you continue the masonry around, I think it would start to look a little bit better. And so, that's what bothers me about this. And just, as we said in, we were just joking about architecture school, that if I turned in a rendering like this, I would say, or the instructor would say, "A for sky, C for building."
Well, I'm hearing some consistent criticism.
It's my turn? I, I think Bruce put it very well. I think this is jarring because it's like seeing two different buildings. I, I understand that a lot of what we're talking about is personal taste and aesthetics, and so, I'm, I, I think this is one of the weaknesses of this whole process, is that so much of it is, is based on personal taste. To me, I think the curve is really cool, and I, it's, it's a, you know, it, it's an element of interest in the building, and it, and it, it makes it a more interesting-looking building. I, I don't have a particular problem with the lines, but I, I would suggest that it might be more interesting if you had, instead of having different color bricks, had some of the bricks come out and some of the, so that you had, so you, you provide relief that way, which is a very common thing in North Hampton. I, I agree very much with Bruce about the, the wide openings here. I think it looks kind of strange, particularly from the, as you, as you drive south. I, I, I think it would be, both on the Pleasant Street side and the Holyoke side, I think it would be a much better-looking building if, if the masonry storefront came all the way around. And even, you know, if you wanted to, even if, you know, from this line, maybe it angled back a tiny bit to provide more light into that space here. I assume that's why you set this back, is because you wanted to provide invitation and light into this corridor.
No, I end to maximize the storefront, yeah, yeah.
But I, even, even if, because you have a curve here, if it angled, or even if it curved back along there to kind of have the whole, I, I don't know if that would work enough. It's just, I, I think it would look, it would be a much more attractive building if the whole storefront were masonry, on both this side and the Holyoke side. And, and then the windows would be more consistent and having some detail of the cornering of the cornice there. I think it would be a lot more attractive. Can, I, I wanted to ask the, do you have that thing with the materials? So, I assume this here is.
It is that, but in, in that section, and that section, and if this started to be a little bit.
Okay. I just wanted to get that to be.
But it's same material, colors in that side.
Now, this, this, there wouldn't be vertical lines, they need to go all the way across in these lines.
They're broken up by the bays, yeah. They're, they're rows of platforms, in essence. There you go.
Modern day.
This is just, this is just like our texture school.
We didn't have computers at my time.
No, 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 I get it, I get it. It could be a mistake, I'd probably have to buy more brick.
And is that part of the issue? Is the, the brick is a lot more expensive?
Well, we are building affordable housing, and the budget.
So, the brick is a lot more expensive than this stuff, than the?
No, no, actually, the brick is not that much more expensive than that stuff, so that, I think it's, that's definitely.
So, we're not, we're not breaking your budget by asking you to do that?
No, you're not, not across the front.
Because that, you know, that.
The whole building is brick, would be a bad part of the budget.
But then, so then you would have no metal panel at that point? Because that's the only metal panel.
Well, if I'm hearing consistent opinion about that, I'm happy to look at continuing the masonry. I think there are parts.
There's metal panels back here.
No metal.
No, not there, not there, there aren't.
But that's, that's this stuff.
Yeah, that's that stuff. Anyway, what I was saying is that I'm receptive to that. I think they're, they're fundamentals of the building that we really, really are very well wed to. I wouldn't say it's the striping in particular. That was, again, an interpretation of, of detail, getting detailed in a way that's achievable in 2015. You know, that's, that's what we were thinking, and we're trying to be sensitive to that.
Does, does changing the relief of the bricks, like having some of them come out farther, is that, does that add a lot of money to the budget?
Yeah, it does, but that's, again, I think we want to do something that's going to set the right example. I think, you know, our feeling is, is that you're coming from that direction, that, a building in this place, and, and as we continue to develop this, I guess, I think it needs to be a good preparation for what, for all the theme buildings, the more contiguous theme buildings. This isn't contiguous with any other building right now, but in 20 years, it may well be.
I think if we take a look at the new police station in town, I think the way they've articulated the, the masonry, the brickwork on the walls, creating shadows with different patterns and all that, I, I think that's worth an example of, you know, contemporary design in what is, in effect, a historic context, without being a historic district.
And I think, too, the presentation we saw last month with Hap Housing did an excellent presentation on modern architecture and historic representation, blending the two together. So, it's possible.
No, I know that. It looked like the bottom of this was aligned with the sign on the, on the building next door. If the top of, I'm sorry, it looked like the top of this was aligned with the sign.
The top, yeah.
If the bottom of this was aligned with it, then I think.
We'd have enough.
You'd have, you'd achieve what you want to do of being lined up with your neighboring building, but having this at a more attractive height.
Mm-hmm.
That's another suggestion.
Yeah. Well, we do have space with the windows up above.
Do we have any say and views from Holyoke Street?
Yeah, it's all in the Seabey District, so the facades are important. So, it sounds like you, it sounds, although I've heard from Barry, but it sounds like the, I believe some of the facades for the street fronts that you'd like to see a change, so that there's brick, it's very all for both those facades. But yes, if those street fronts is in the Seabey District.
Well, I guess I'm talking about the actual facade that's running along the railroad tracks. Will you see, will you see that facade from Holyoke Street as you're coming down?
Not much.
There's, there's a very large window, which seems to be a window pattern that's different from any other window pattern on that facade, and I was curious why. Very large window bay, which is different from all the other window bays.
It's over a double entry into two of the units, that's why.
I think what, it just seems like a lot, a lot of glazing at that. It's just out of proportion from everything else on the building.
We should probably show you some views of that, what you'll actually see.
From what you would see.
Yeah, yeah.
And then while we're on this view, it appeared like there's this little bump out on the side of the building that's one story high, that doesn't quite integrate. It's hard to tell because we don't have a three-dimensional view, but that.
Right, that's the extension of the, the reason we did that was to create more non-residential use and a blocking back into the parking area, to constrict the driveways. We pulled that across and deepened up as much strip, which is, so that's, that's why that's there.
I think it would be helpful to see that in, in three dimensions, because it, it just felt, it feels a little bit awkward right there.
You're talking about that little bump out right there?
Yeah, it's the extension of the, of the commercial space.
Of those three windows that you're looking at on the left there?
Yeah. It looks out to the parking, to the driveway entry.
What is the function of, what's in that room?
That is the, the Valley CDC's do move their offices into there. As I said, it was both to create more of a space there, but also strip the driveway to limit the, and stack into the parking areas.
I just wanted, Barry, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I'm not needing to take up any more time.
Okay.
You've covered it well. I mean, I'm, I'm probably the, more susceptible to the mix of contemporary. I mean, I think that buildings of this century should look like they're of this century, and yet have respect for the historical content of it. And so, I probably wouldn't go as far as to, but I don't have any problem with anything that's been presented.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to say that I, I went through each of these items because I, I felt like perhaps the design team did not review the guidelines as thoroughly as I thought you should have, but I think what I'm hearing more is that it was a different interpretation. You definitely looked at the guidelines, how we interpret them is different. I, I do want to say that I'm, I'm very excited about the potential of, of development of this site and fully in favor of it happening. And I think I'm, I'm grateful that Valley CDC is taking on this heroic effort, and I think it can be a really exciting development. And even though I brought up a lot of details, I also understand that this is a schematic design and you have a lot of work to do. And I just, I want you to hear what we have to say, and I want you to hear what the community has to say, because we want it to be a loved building in, in the neighborhood. So, I am grateful, in fact, that this hearing remains open so that we get to hopefully see some of that integrated in the next review.
Well, we truly value your criticism. I find buildings really do get better when more people come in, so.
Are we going to care a lot about this six-over-one versus the divided-in-four window?
I think they're going to come back with a lot of different changes, so I don't think we're making any.
Yeah, I mean, I think they heard, like, your comments were, and I think the planning board probably wants to weigh in.
Have some issues, too. Thank you.
But they don't have to talk to me, at least.
They're in touch with the engineers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we open up to public, the planning board has some questions, I assume. Ours is a site plan review, it's not a special permit, so the, the nature of our questions is, is much more straightforward. Zoning setbacks, height, and so forth. All the zoning requirements have been met by the applicant, but we still have an opportunity to ask some questions, so. With that being said, who has questions? Yep.
I'll start. Curious how many bike racks, the capacity of bike racks that you're providing?
There, currently, there are 30, or if we change the nature of our thought, it could be 36.
Okay, all right, great. There's no drain shown under the play area, yet the play area is designated as infiltrating stormwater, so.
The area around it will be?
Underneath the play area.
Which play area?
On Short Street.
On Short Street?
Short Street.
There's a rain garden.
That connects to a drain.
All right, well, it's just something that I noticed that, that caused me concern, that underneath the play area itself.
Sheets flow into the, sheets flow into the rain garden.
Okay, okay.
It will be sloped, handicap accessible, obviously, into the rain garden, and then there'll be a drain in the rain garden to go into the, the culvert.
Okay. I do like that you've limited the grass area to a small portion at the picnic area, and you're using native ground cover. I think that's a, a good feature. Your plans mention that, that you might choose to capture roof runoff and AC condensate for irrigation use. So, what would be the factors that would determine that?
Sorry, I was writing down everything you said. Okay, what was the question?
Sure. Your plans say that, that you might choose to capture roof runoff and AC condensate for irrigation use? So, what, what will go into your decision-making?
It would, well, it would be somewhat economically driven, I think. The, the condensate's not a huge amount of water, but, and we haven't designed any storage tanks at this, at this point, for harvesting of the rainwater, but we think it'd be a great amenity.
Yeah, I actually think the condensate would, would be quite, quite a quantity for that square footage.
Yeah, it's a big building, true enough. No, we're receptive to them, we've done it in a lot of projects.
Okay. I am concerned about the, the light fixtures you showed tonight.
You have a concern?
Even though they are full cutoff, you know, being able to see the light source typically causes a lot of glare. So, I, you know, I know we're not deciding tonight, and you're probably going back to the drawing board, so that's something that, that I would ask you to, to, to look at again.
Yeah, I think actually that should be a condition. We don't allow the light fixture itself, it's not clear where the light is, if it's in up in or it's coming from the bottom.
It shoots down, actually, there's no, there won't be spell.
Right, but I think the issue is where's the, the lamp?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Your site detail sheet shows bituminous concrete and cement, but no pervious concrete unit pavers, yet your, your plans talk about all the hardscape will be pervious. So, then I think I heard the comment that you haven't decided yet.
It's an economic decision, and whether it can happen, the desire and every effort we made to have it happen.
Okay. And then lastly, the, the photometric plan, it, it didn't show the foot candles at the property line, so, and I don't know them well enough to know. Like, you, you kind of contained it within the hardscape?
It drops, at the property, it drops down to point one.
Point, yeah, I think it's supposed to be zero, but, yeah. I guess I would say if, if, you know, if it, when it comes to us for, for vote, that would be important to know.
The receptors are, and obviously, we have the railroad on this side, which is higher than us. This is the building, and then we have Short Street on this side. And actually, the abater in this location is asking us to.
A little bit more lighting.
Add a fixture so he could get light on his property.
But I think that's a good zoning, right?
Yeah.
Who else has questions?
I don't, I don't have any question, I think, questions. I, I think it, the plan satisfies the zoning requirements, makes good use of a very difficult site. I don't know whether this comment is appropriate, but I'm just, I've been sitting here being very puzzled at the review by our colleagues on the architectural committee. Just a month ago, we approved, both committees approved the Hap Housing that was five stories, not four stories, and was masonry in the front, and had what appeared to me personally as being very inexpensive prefab panels along both sides. And the architect there justified it by saying they're doing affordable housing and it's cheaper, but yet, that project was partially market rate, and this is entirely affordable. And I don't understand, the other Hap project just didn't seem to be subjected to the rigorous point-by-point critiques in comparison to the design guidelines that this one was, even though to me, as I say, maybe I'm missing the architectural fine points of it, but seems to be very similar in its use of materials. So, I've, I've just been trying to figure out why the review seems so different.
No, it's not so.
We've covered the things that apply to zoning, so I mean, there's no particular questions here. I applaud you for all of the bike racks, that's way beyond what would have been needed. I think you're looking forward to what I hope that housing stock does, which is integrate into downtown and, and not be relying on the cars. You didn't have to do as much parking as you did, we thank you for it. It, it needs to get us from here to next century. I think you're, the, the extra green space that you've got for snow storage will be advantageous. It's, it's going to be a problem moving everything around on such a tight property. I did have a question about parkas drainage, so thank you.
I just have a couple of housekeeping questions. Snow removal. It's a tough site, and you're advocating kind of the...
Basically, we have, we could store snow in this location, in this location, and also in the winter, obviously, the playground, the play area won't be used, so we could snow, we could store snow in this location as well. So for the amount of parking that we show, I think...
How about that, you're advocating a pedestrian cut-through between Holyoke and Pleasant, and I envision because of the geometry of the buildings next to each other...
Along the sidewalk, you mean?
In the internal...
Oh, internal, okay.
Exactly.
Yep.
So if you're, on the one hand, promoting that as a cut-through pedestrian-wise, in the winter, I can see that just filling up with snow. Do you have plans to remove the snow in that area?
Well, the snow will be cleared off the sidewalk, obviously. So, you know, there'll be potentially room for snow storage in this location here, you know, where there's seedings and what have you. So those won't be used in the winter. Similarly, in this play area as well.
Are those considered public sidewalks, even though...
Inside?
Yeah.
No, those are private.
So can we make that a condition to keep them clear? I mean, it would make sense that you want to keep them clear.
I mean, they need to be clear for the residents, obviously.
Right, right.
You could also have a condition about, I mean, you know, keeping pedestrian, all the pedestrian accessways clear, so if they can pile up the snow, create tunnels, and they want to do that, that would be fine.
Last question. Are there any building lights on, around the perimeter, on the building itself?
There will be.
Do you know what the fixtures are going to look like?
Similar where we show, similar to the parking lot lights, the one on the top right there, that will be on the building. Again, these more for the sidewalk lighting.
Okay. Same issue with that about the lamp placement.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
And when the lights turn off at night, you know, we don't want them necessarily on all night. So, okay. Any other questions with the board? Ready for a public comment? Okay, we're an hour and a half into the presentation. We're ready for public comment. So, just a couple, not ground rules, but points of note. There, we are in receipt of a couple correspondences from abutters and people that have voiced their concern. Both items, I think, have been touched on a little bit tonight. One is the amount of, or lack thereof, of commercial space at the first floor. And from a zoning standpoint, the applicant has met the minimum requirement. So from a planning board point of view, we can't mandate that they have more than that they've, than has been presented. The applicant seems receptive to that potentiality down the line, but it's not something that needs to or should be debated tonight. I appreciate everybody coming out, and if that's a concern of yours and you want to voice your opinion, that's great, but I, there shouldn't be a lot of back and forth because that condition has been, has been met. There's also been comments or concerns about, and it was touched on briefly in the presentation. As you're looking at the property from Pleasant Street, there's a, there's a property on the, a piece of property on the left where there's an easement. What happens between the street and the back of that little funky little piece of property might be in question at this point, but at the street side where the city has purview, they've requested, and the applicant has, has shown that the curb cut for, I think it's 25 feet or something like that, is going to be closed with granite. And that sidewalk will be continued, you know, that detail will be continued around the building. So, again, from a zoning standpoint, that regulation has been, has been satisfied. Again, that's not really something that we should debate tonight. That's not in our purview to do that. Again, nothing's going to be decided tonight. We've got a couple more hearings after this. The applicant, I think, has some homework to do in responding to some of the questions that have come up. So what we're going to do, we're going to jump in. If you could raise your hand, come to the podium, give your name and address, address the two boards. We'll hear a bunch of comments, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to respond after we get a couple comments under our belt. It's not going to be a give-and-take all the way through. If somebody ahead of you has made a statement that you agree with, since it is 8:30 and we have six more items after this hearing, we want to hear what you have to say, but just say, "I agree with Mrs. Smith," or "Mr. Johnson," or so forth. We don't, you don't need to repeat everything that's been said before. But again, we want to hear your opinion, and we appreciate that you're here. So with that being said, why don't we jump in and, yes?
Thank you. It's been a long time since I've stood up in this room. I'm Rutherford Platt, 78 Hillcrest in Florence, and I have an office in Jordy Harrell's building on Short, one Short Street. I'm very much in favor of this project. I think it's a great reuse of that derelict lumber site. However, please be aware of the traffic problem down on Pleasant Street. It is horrible, especially with early daylight right now. You may, the city may well need to install a light at Holyoke. I'm glad that the access to and from this project is on Holyoke Street, not Pleasant Street, but it is still horrendous getting in and out of Pleasant Street. Secondly, the pedestrian aspect of Pleasant Street is totally unpleasant. I'm talking about walking between the side of these two buildings, the HAP and the CAC, up to the center of town. And I do that walk frequently. I did this afternoon. The sidewalk is very narrow. It's blocked by various obstacles, parking meters, signs, tables, whatever, at Sylvester's. It is broken up. The pavement is very uneven. The tree roots have heaved up brick planter areas. I don't know how wheelchairs can negotiate it. So with more and more people walking up and down Pleasant Street, and I hope they will, we need more sidewalk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Royal. I'm an owner at 236 Pleasant Street as well as 270 Pleasant Street. I had submitted a letter in advance of this meeting with the expectation that this meeting would not go forward as it's premature. And I continue to state my objection in that regard. I had a meeting with the CDC as well as the architect and was specifically told at that meeting and acknowledged by the architect that their plans that are submitted before the city encroach on my property. I have since learned, this was acknowledged by the architect at a meeting that my business partner attended as well as my law partner. It's premature to be talking about design and reviewing plans and discussing them and hearing about plans when these plans that are before the city cannot go forward. I will also note that this picture that the CDC continues to present as the rendering of this building is impossible, given the design, given the constraints of the dimensions of this property. The architect acknowledged this to me at a meeting last week. This is a very misleading representation, acknowledged by the CDC's own architect. Where is my building, 270 Pleasant here? You can't possibly construct this with this rendering and have this entryway and then have my building at 270 Pleasant. So I want to make sure that those are on the record, as well as, I did hear that the planning board does not want to talk about the curb cut, and that's fine, but I just want to put the city on notice that if that impacts me, there will be action that I'll have to take if that is closed on that site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, in the back.
I'm Mac Everett. I live at 40 Valley Street in that neighborhood behind Holyoke Street. And I want to pick up on a comment that Mr. Platt made. I serve on the Ward Three Traffic Calming Committee, and over the years, we've had lots of anecdotal stories about people trying to cross Pleasant Street at the Holyoke intersection and having near misses. And it gets back to the bend in the road that we started the conversation with. The visibility is not that great. People are accelerating as they go out of town. People are coming off the highway and, in some cases, still going at highway speeds. So I think a really important part of this project is going to be to take a really serious look at that particular crosswalk and, because it's already very dangerous. Thank you.
Mac, has it, Matt, Mac? Has it mattered after we removed the parking place? We took out one parking place?
I think that helped. I think that helped, but there's still an issue there. And we haven't really, you know, for a while, we had a paddle there, but we had to take that down because the towing company needed to turn cranes and trucks in there and so forth. So it's, I think that move did help, but it's still an issue. And with 55 units going in there and more people crossing, I can see it being more of an issue, so.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Yep.
I'm Jordy Harrell, and I live at 3 Massasoit Avenue, but I'm an abutter to the project on Short Street, where I've owned since 1986. And before I read what I've written, because I don't always speak well in public, I want to say that the notion of that there's been a lot of public, opportunity for public input into the publicly funded project doesn't ring exactly true to me, because the real request for public input came in October of 2014, when essentially this rendering was presented and some feedback was sought on it, which is very different than saying, "What kind of project will work best in this part of the town, and what stakeholders and abutters can we get input from?" So I just want to say that, and that kind of informs the remarks I was going to make. The other thing that informs the remarks is that we talk about the 45 feet of frontage on Pleasant Street that the project has, or the 115 feet of frontage on Holyoke Street. And the project shares a 225-foot perimeter with Short Street and its continuation. And that's not discussed a lot in here, but is very, both visible in the approach from north to south to the building, extremely visible. And it also impacts the immediate abutters significantly. And I've reached out very early on to the CDC to talk about something that might look more holistically at all the properties that surround it, as opposed to answering technically to things in the, in the zoning. So with that in mind, if you'll bear with me, this is maybe about a minute longer than in City Council, where allowed. But in the 1990s, I worked closely with the developer and participated in the public process during the planning for 228 Pleasant, which is now the Heck Academy, a project that abuts mine along 350 feet of property line. The early input resulted in a project that, at least by degrees, became more responsive to architectural vocabulary, to neighborhood concerns. Lighting was improved, and the city's favorite architectural street lamp was used. And also, through cooperation during construction, resulted in an integrated landscape and hardscape encompassing our buildings and parking areas. And I was able to truly come to what was then the equivalent of this hearing as a supporter. And I would add parenthetically with that, that when that project, now the Heck Academy, was created, we managed to collaboratively create what amounts to a vest pocket, urban vest pocket park back there where there's, for what is a 10,000-square-foot building and its, and its new neighbor, much more green space than is being created for this 70,000-square-foot building. In September of 13, 15 months ago, I approached the CDC when I heard they were planning a large project that abutted me. And the proposed project shares, as I said, 225 feet of property line with me. I wanted to start the conversation very early, 15 months ago, a year and a quarter ago, so that I could come to this meeting in support as well. We met twice early on, and I expressed my thoughts, but not many of them were considered in the design that was presented to the community a few weeks ago or presented here at this meeting. The first thing that I urged them to do was to create a project that considered preservation, one that recognized and participated in the band of 19th-century heritage and industrial buildings that runs down Pleasant Street, not to emulate certain iconic elements, but to actually participate in it. Union Station, the Yes Computers 19th-century building, the 1854 Herrick Mill, which is my building on Short Street, the Royals Eagles Building, the Keller Williams Building. The lumberyard property itself contains a great 19th-century mill and is the sole survivor of the tragic 1980 fire. I don't know how many of you are around, but that took down an entire mill complex on the corner of Pleasant Street and Holyoke. So we have a chance to preserve that if this was brought forward in a different way. But this project proposes demolish that rather than incorporate it. Second, I asked them to create a project that was sensitive to the context of the neighborhood and integrated with the streetscape. So again, you know, we are looking at a, in terms of, I don't want to, I'm trying to save time here, but we're looking at a monolithic building that from most of the orientations, as you looked at that bill, that view heading from, from north to south, and as you look at it as it exposes to Short Street, which will be open because it's so much higher than any of the buildings around it, dwarfs anything on the street and any of the neighboring structures. So while I can respect that perhaps another 20 years or another 50 years or something, that size may come along, at the moment, it looms. The third was the mixed use, which, again, it has been touched on, but I feel that I should reiterate. The project is mixed use in name only, because the majority of the commercial space is the offices of the CDC, which is a limited and insular use that is not encouraging a great amount of street traffic. When you go by their offices on Market Street, people aren't coming and going, to and froing, helping to revitalize the neighborhood. It's a, it's a working office environment. And lastly, learning from the past, one of the very first things I said as it became clear what this building was going to be is, let's look at Hampton Place. We have a monolithic building that ends up feeling very cold and not very integrated into town, even as it sits even closer to the heart of town, and that also features an opening in the streetscape that goes into the heart of the project with a very well-intentioned aspirational fountain and courtyard, which now, of course, is gated off and that never fulfilled its promise. And there was something to learn from that, and that it might not be a great trade-off for taking what exists now, the existing lumberyard showroom, as a retail space, and taking commercial out of there to create what has, what could be great, or could be a courtyard to nowhere. So I understand that I can have my great ideas as an abutter. I also understand, you know, as a developer, how hard it is to put all this stuff together. But I will say that I haven't felt heard, and even on the micro level, the smaller suggestions that would make things more palatable to me as an abutter have been listened to but have not been presented in this plan. And I feel very awkward, because it's a lot of hard work to put this together. It's a lot of hard work to put together the funding. It's a lot of hard work to animate a site that has had a completely different use and has been dead for a while. But on the other hand, this is the only forum that I have to say, "Wait a minute. I just haven't been heard, and something very big has created shape without a lot of input from people." But it's a publicly funded project, from the CPA dollars to the state-level dollars that are going to come into it. And so, you know, it's worth having that conversation on the macro level before we go forward with the proposal. And on the micro level, just for myself as an abutter, you heard even here, the simple issue, Short Street has, is not over-illuminated, but Short Street has eight lights running the length that would be roughly the length of this project that helped to make it a safe, inviting street at night, whether that's for Roberto's customers who park there, for my residential tenants, for my office tenants. And the project proposes two lights, one of which is set back into the park, and the other light is supposed to take care of the other 225 feet of winding and budding frontage. And while it's been said, we can talk about that, what am I left to do but stand here and say, like, "Let's find a way to make that right and make that safe"? The 50% of the fencing that runs along the shared frontage is black vinyl fencing, and that's where it sits. And I don't have any other moment to say, like, "Is that really what the best that we can do?" But to come to a meeting like this. The stormwater is collected, and the notion of a rain garden resonates very nicely, but it moves the water fundamentally away from their building and pools it in a pocket. Hopefully, it drains very quickly, but it pools it in a pocket adjacent to three abutters. The, again, the project is building along 225 feet of shared, shared boundary where I have mature lilacs, I have... where I have mature lilacs, I have other plantings. But more importantly, the project theorizes that they will build along two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet of shared boundary by very carefully and perhaps expensively, I don't know, staging their project, so they never have to step foot on the other side and do things that then might knit things together and approach this a little bit more holistically. And I just question as to whether that's really a reality. And again, I'm left with no other forum than that, because I have met with the executive director on two or three separate occasions, and although we've had conversations about these things, the general response is, well, the building isn't that well-iterated, and we don't even know what we're doing, so how can we say that we'd like to have an agreement where we do those things? And yet, part of what's proposed is saw-cutting a concrete wall that is on the dividing line. Part of what is proposed is building, if you look at the fencing along Short Street, is nicely proposed actually as a brick wall with some ion gates in it. How do you build a brick wall without that, without working from both sides of it? How do you build a brick wall behind a line of twenty-foot-tall, mature lilacs without having some kind of physical relationship, not just meeting relationship with the abutter? So I'll leave it at that. There just seems to be a certain, without being trite, community aspect, large or small, missing from the community development end here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and, yep.
Good evening, I'm Bill Deal. I'm at seventy-five Gothic Street. I'm the executive director of the Collaborative Educational Services. We own the Heck Academy that Jordi just referred to at two-twenty-eight Pleasant. If you don't know, the collaborative is one of the largest employers in Northampton. We have six-hundred employees, one-hundred-and-eighty in the community itself. And we run Heck Academy, which is a school for special education students. We're collaborative of all the school districts in Franklin, Hampshire County. We serve three-six-member school districts, and they all send kids to Heck Academy every day. These are kids who are served, who can't be served in regular school districts because their disabilities either are specialized or they're very difficult for the school district to handle. So we have special special education students there. And we're a little bit concerned that in none of the plans presented here, none of the conversations earlier in the whole development, was anything mentioned about or talked about about a school being right next to the property here. So let me just speak for the children, if I may. Two, just two concerns I'll bring up, in addition to all the parking and traffic, pedestrian safety, that of course affect the kids. But let me talk about two. One of them is the playground. You've heard this evening, this playground is a green area, a playground, a rain garden, also the place for snow to be plowed up, because they didn't use in the winter. And it's also been mentioned in a different meeting as a place for cars to turn around. It's a very relatively small area with fifty-five units. You're going to have kids there. And I really hope that the developers come forward with some more specific plans about this playground, so in fact, the kids, who have no place to walk safely, have a safe place to play on the grounds. I think it's a very important consideration, and I hope it is taken into consideration. The second thing is just Short Street, real quickly. Jordi mentioned some of the issues. For us, the issue is, we have buses and vans coming in from all over two counties in the morning and afternoon, and they have to line up on Short Street. So if we have fifty-five units with forty-one parking spaces, and there are some people who've managed to sneak into our parking area, our school buses will sit out on Pleasant Street and not on Short Street. And that creates all kinds of other issues. So we are definitely concerned about how do we protect Short Street during both construction and when it actually, the project is in effect, to be able to protect that space for the school buses and safety of our children. So those are the two considerations I want to make sure is put on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, Tom.
Can I stick in a thumb drive and show a couple images?
How many images?
We can go through them very quickly. Somebody might have to help me figure out where to stick it in. Just need a USB cord. I've done it before on this computer, but it's not my computer. That's upside down. So if you could, you could get me into that. I might have to use the phone on this computer.
Is that, is that good? That's not yours, is it?
No. Suppose I could do without it. So just had a few things to speak to architecture in the CBC committee. This is Fitzwelly. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Tom Douglas. I'm an abutter. I co-own the Yes Computers building, just right up the street from this project. I'm showing this project, because it's a hundred-and-twenty-five-foot-long building. It's all made of brick. It's a Fitzwelly's building. It's a continuous facade, a continuous storefront, and a continuous cornice. I think that those are all great elements that are representative of theme buildings in Northampton. It expresses verticality perfectly well by the use of careful detailing and small setbacks. I think that it expresses many of the things that they've talked about in this building so far, what they're doing with different materials. This is my building before it was renovated. Same thing, continuous facade, continuous roofline. It's got a nice pattern of windows that isn't constantly the same all the way across. The new building that the lumberyard is made up of, four different elements. Bruce had said two. It's really four elements. It's the brick theme building. It's the aluminum sort of anomaly building jammed up against it. It's got a projecting first-floor retail space that's sort of like, has a marquee sticking out from it. And it's really a first-floor projection, which I don't even know if it's really allowed in central business. And then it's got the alley, too. So there are four different parts of this building that I think you have to look at. The reason I mention the alley is because it's a twelve-foot-wide alley. And you can see the sign panel there has, is really a projecting marquee. It sticks out from the building, curves all the way around. It's not just a sign panel applied to the building like the traditional Northampton buildings is. This is more like a marquee. It's got a twelve-foot-wide alley on the side. I started to try to think about, what's the scale of this building going to be like on that street compared to other buildings in town? And especially, what is the scale of that alleyway going to be like? Call twelve feet here. You can see, let's see. So I started going around town, looking at other alleys to see, what is a twelve-foot alley really like? This is Hampton Court, everybody knows about it. Twenty-eight feet right there between Sylvester's and Hampton Court. This is my building. I have a little alley next to it that I wish I could expand into and create retail, but I can't. Twenty-one feet there. Still walkable, it's still a decent pedestrian space. This is between First Churches and the Urban Outfitters Building, nineteen feet. It's starting to get smaller. Calvin and the Bank, seventeen feet. Pizza Place and the other building, I forget the name of it, sixteen. This is twelve feet. So this is twelve feet wide, this alleyway here, and that's what's being proposed for this building at the lumberyard. And I think that it's very different than what is on the rendering. And the reason I bring this up is because I know that renderings, the perspective stretches things, and it gives you a little warped perspective sometimes. They didn't show the neighboring building and their alley, so it makes it look like there's open space on one side where it really is hemmed in, just like this. And the other thing is, the reason I really want to talk about this is because we're missing an opportunity for additional retail on Pleasant Street. I think that twelve feet there, being devoted to a little skinny alley like this, is not going to help that street frontage at all. I think that we could really use more retail. We could, we should maximize the facade of that building to allow for more retail space there and not a little alley like that. So here you can see the alley. It looks more like the alley next to my building. Looks like it's about twenty feet wide. So I know that part of this alleyway is to get you back into the middle of the building, so you can get into the lobby of this building. But that lobby actually has two entrances on either side, so this is only one of the sides. And it leads back to a little pocket garden, which sort of like Hampton Court, where it leads you back into, there you go back into a much larger garden. It's not used at all by anybody at all. It's a very dead space. And that's my concern about this, is this alleyway is going to be super skinny, leading back into a dead space, it's never going to be used by anybody, and not contribute to the streetscape of Pleasant Street. So the other problems I have about this building, I can talk, I think the brick part of it is a theme building. I like the idea that they're addressing the need for a theme building. I think that the aluminum part, I have a lot of questions about why it's there. It looks very arbitrary. I don't understand, I understand why it could be setback, but being made out of aluminum, having no cornice to it, having one single window in the middle, I don't understand how any of those things fit with any of the guidelines of downtown. I think that the guidelines allow metal, but not aluminum big panels like this. The other thing is the windows in the front of the aluminum building. It's just like a Cyclops, one big building, no rhythm at all, doesn't relate to anything else around it. And I really think that those are sliding glass doors. That's what they look like. If you look at it, is that, are those sliding glass doors? Because they have a little patio, like a little fenced balcony in front of it. And I think there's nothing in the guidelines that allows sliding glass doors on the street frontage. The other thing is that projecting canopy there, I think, like I said before, it's not a sign panel, it's a projecting canopy, and it has no detail to it all, at all. If it was totally covered by signage, I think that it could work, but it really is like a marquee in the front of the building. The point about the curvature, I think a lot of people think that it's a personal preference as to whether you like the curved facade or not. But I think that there are guidelines you can look at as to why some buildings have curved facades. Typically, a curved facade goes around a corner. This building contradicts that. It doesn't follow the streetscape at all. The examples they all showed about curved facades, the curved facade, like I said, went around the corner. This actually goes opposite of the curvature of the street. It projects out into the street. It's a bulge pushing out into the street. And I think a lot of the subtle discussion about wanting this building to be prominent, wanting to be featured on Pleasant Street, are represented by this curved facade bulging out the wrong way from the street. I think that there's a lot of stuff, it is too tall. It could be, could take up more space, provide more retail space, and it could provide a long, unbroken facade, both with the brick and get rid of that aluminum, make it all brick, make it a much bigger facade with more interesting window openings. And I think that the punches on the top, the punch openings under the cornice there don't make any sense in downtown at all. But one last thing I wanted to say about the first-floor retail and that canopy space, it's hard to tell from some of the renderings. You can see where it sticks out right there. See where the sign ends, and then there's a little brick section there. The funny thing about this building is it has two real different retail settings. One is this one that faces Pleasant Street, and then you hit a brick wall. And then what happens around it, you can't see at all. It's not an unbroken facade like I was talking about, that we see in many downtown buildings, unbroken storefront facade. This, it's hard to see there. There, you can see the storefront facing down on the south end. So it's two very different facades facing two different ways, and it's arbitrarily created by this curving facade that is in contradiction to the street curvature. So those are the things I wanted to say. I think that it should be one unbroken masonry facade with better window rhythm. And I think the canopy is poorly detailed, and the storefront should be all one linked facade, not broken up like this, and not have that little single-story projection sticking out on it. And I think that the alleyway should be filled in, because I think that it's going to be far more valuable as commercial space than it ever will be as a pedestrian alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep.
Hi, my name is James J. P. Korsinski. I live at forty-seven Hannah Brook Drive in East Hampton. My family has owned property, and I, my wife and I now own property to the east of this building, on the other side of the railroad tracks on Hoyoke Street. We've been on Hoyoke Street for, since about nineteen twenty. It's changing, a lot of things are happening for the good, like to see that. I can't agree more with Mr. Douglas and his comments regarding having the building begin to conform, not conform, to represent the neighborhood, to work with the neighborhood, to be part of Northampton. We have an opportunity here as a gateway for the city. Just so disappointed. This building, if you look at the other buildings in the neighborhood, if you look at the Gleason Building, that where the DA's office is, it's all brick. If you look at Randolph Place, the apartments there, it's all wood. If you look at the building across the street on Hoyoke Street, currently occupied by Keller Williams, it's all brick. Fine details, architectural work, but it's all brick or one material. Here, it's a mishmash, in my opinion, of a variety of materials, which I don't think enhance our gateway. That being said, I didn't bring my thumb drive, wish I had. And please bear with me, I'm not sure that you can do very much about this, but I think it's important for the planning board and for the city of Northampton's future. May I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Leave the materials? This is my past. An example of. It's an example of what the parking is in Northampton. To me, parking is the key to the city, the key, the pillar on which Northampton survives. The retail, the entertainment, the restaurants. If you look at Kingsley Avenue, if you look at Randolph Place, if you look at Michaelman, you look at Phillips Place, you look at Hoyoke Street up and down, Holly, I mean, not Hoyoke Street, sorry, Holly Street, they're filled already, filled to capacity. If we're going to bring in fifty-five new units, under the old zoning, I think it was two units, two parking spaces per unit, which would bring you to what? Fifty-five times two is a hundred and ten, and then you'd have space for parking for the commercial. That would be at least another ten, so now you're up to a hundred and twenty. And then you'd have some visitor parking for the fifty-five spaces, fifty-five units. So that probably brings you up to around the area of a hundred and thirty parking spaces. Well, when, I'm sure the planning board and the city council, because I know planning board and the city council works hard to make good decisions. When you made the decision about the central business district, you looked at, do we want to tear down an existing central business building to build a parking lot for another building? I think that was one of the major considerations in approving the zoning. Here, we're in a different situation, where you have pretty much a clean slate of an acre of land, and you have an opportunity to make this gateway help Northampton survive for the future. Reading Bill Newman's article in the Daily Hampshire Gazette, his monthly article, I don't know if anybody happened to see it. He said MGM is going to eat Northampton's lunch, because they'll have parking. We don't have any parking, as the zoning continues to make it such that you can't come to Northampton to do business. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Caleb Langer, I live at thirty-two Powell Street. I'm not going to speak to a lot of the finer details that other people have elaborated on so well, but I would like to say that we're coming into the home stretch. on so well, but I would like to say that we're coming into the home stretch of a project that's the result of tens of millions of dollars in investment to upgrade and realign rail service through the Pioneer Valley. It's a project that I think a lot of residents in the region, myself included, are very excited about. And I think that North Hampton is very fortunate to have a location along that line. If you talk to anybody who is knowledgeable about that, they'll say that their primary concern with the success of the project is not the service that it'll provide, but that appropriate and appropriately dense development is situated within a key radius around those transit stations. And this is exactly the neighborhood that we're talking about. Studies have shown that the number one factor affecting transit ridership is not even the quality of the service, but the type of development within a half mile radius around that station. The federal funding awarded for that project was not based on an Amtrak or a monitor train, it was based on at least half a dozen commuter trains with robust ridership to be financially viable and that's why it was awarded. A lot of cities have done away with parking completely within that critical half mile distance because expanding parking opportunities within that distance not only erodes transit ridership, but it uses critical space within that really very small area. So I think that providing housing of this appropriate density in that very critical area is absolutely in keeping with what this city needs to do to move forward in this century with the transit opportunities that we all know are very important to the economic success of this region. So as a very broad statement, I would say that I support this and I hope that everybody else will.
Thank you. Anyone else? So the public comment portion of this joint hearing is going to stay open. I don't know that from the planning board end, we need to assign any conditions yet because there's still a lot more conversation to be had. I imagine you feel the same. I don't know if you have a summary on the presenting side that you want to address any of these issues briefly or?
I'd like to address a couple too when you're all done.
Okay. Do you, I don't want you to go through point by point, but do you have any? No? Okay. So I think you've heard what we've had, say architecturally and from a zoning, planning point of view. Carolyn, got something to add?
Yeah, I just thought I'd throw, address some of the issues that were raised, you know, the most going sort of the most recent to the earlier comments, just about the parking requirements. As you know, there aren't any parking requirements in central business that move from one space per residential unit in central business, not two. Never had visitor parking requirements. And that also, the concept is that, you know, the city will continue obviously to look at public parking spaces and the fact that people just aren't bringing their cars as much into downtown and there's a lot more walking and other ridership that's happening in close proximity to the central business district. And then in terms of, say, we heard comments about concerns about safety on Pleasant Street, the safety of sidewalks, safety of crosswalks. The city, as you all know, we're undertaking a study and possible, we did a mini strategic plan for improvements of the public infrastructure on Pleasant Street, looking at Strong Avenue all the way down ultimately to the Dyke, but the first segment to Hockenham Road. So the city is taking steps to try to address those concerns that are well-known, the inadequate sidewalk space, the dimension of the sidewalk, plus all the obstacles that are in the sidewalks that were mentioned. And as each project progresses, as we do get new development, we work with applicants to improve those pedestrian features in, as part of that project. So the requirement to rebuild sidewalks to a standard five foot width along Hoyoke Street may only be a segment, but it's a start in that direction. The same is on Pleasant Street, the sidewalk is uneven and different materials and so we want to clean that up. And as driveways are not being used for properties anymore, we close those curb, those portion of curb cuts that, to ensure that the pedestrian safety factor is improved so there isn't continued conflict between, you know, cars that might be taking a bad turn and go up into, you know, a place that's no longer a driveway. So that's why we require those closings when, as projects come forward. And then of course, Short Street is a private road, so that doesn't come into, it's a private street, so that's why the focus has been Pleasant Street and Hoyoke Street because those are the public streets in the district. So just wanted to.
Okay. John, anything else on your end? You're good? We're good on our side? Okay, thank you all for showing up. Again, we're still open, so we still have a number of hearings for the night and so...
Oh wait, you want to officially continue to a date time certain?
Oh yeah, we need to vote to continue?
Yeah.
I mean, we continue public hearing?
Second.
To what date, January 8th at 7:00?
January 8th at 7:00.
Okay.
Second.
Guys, do you want to do a joint hearing or do you want to do a separate hearing?
So Mark, you need to hang on. Yeah.
It's really painful.
Thank you.
A joint hearing is really painful.
At San Antonio.
You know, I'm surprised that the architects didn't want that issue about the 12th driveway, I mean alley.
Yeah, theatrical.
Is not accurate.
I'd like to talk to you outside.
It's 11 points there. It's looking soft.
Yeah, but doesn't open up a whole lot. Three, six, nine.
Can I ask anybody who's seen, not in attending the next hearing to quietly leave?
You can tell her about what's up, Ben. You can't discuss the mayor's project outside the hearing.
As a note to planning board members, the hearing's still open, so we can't discuss this with anyone. You bump into somebody at the market, they have love to, but not on January nights or the next hearings.
Yeah. Are you trying to get out of it? But you can't talk to him? Now.
About 12 hours worth of billable time.
Oh yeah, I'll recite. Okay, thanks.
2015. That was the second round. That was the second round. Actually, we've kind of moved to electronics, but some people still like to read.
I'm all for electronics.
Gordy, I'll take one. Thank you.
Your letter, absolutely. Thanks.
I guess this does take some artistic.
It does.
Second?
It's like that big wide plaza.
Because what you'd see is more like that. I mean, all of that's there, it's not wrong, but you wouldn't be seeing.
Well, the building, yeah, you'd see, so the building next to it is, what, three stories? Two and a half or something?
Yeah, yeah.
But there wouldn't be this.
Okay, we ready for our next question? I know you guys are.
Yes. What's the easiest way for everybody to see the board check? Can it up, hold up?
Probably in front of the, yeah, you have the podium, looks good.
Yep.
All right, I'd like to open up the next hearing scheduled for eight o'clock, so we're a full hour and a half behind. Site plan for 24,000 square feet of new construction at Cooley Dickinson Hospital, 30 Locust Street, North Hampton Map ID 24A-46. So, you've got a presentation.
Hi, my name's Dale Taglianti, I'm with Laura Switzer, a healthcare architecture firm that's working with Cooley Dickinson on the cancer center renovation project. And today I have Joanne.
Marcus.
Marcus C. with, who's the CEO of the hospital, Mark Navati, who's the CNO, and John Lombardi, sorry, CMO, and John Lombardi, who's the facility director at the hospital. So what we'd like to do is just...
Can I interrupt you? I'm sorry, you were going so fast, I didn't get to take your name down.
It's Dale Taglianti.
Okay.
T-A-G-L-I-E-N-T-I.
Okay, thanks.
And it's 2,400 square feet is the addition to the space. So to give everybody just a little bit of background, Cooley Dickinson has been working on this, so this has been in the works since 2005, 2006. One of the big contingents was getting the rehabilitation department to an off-site location which would work better for its visitors, people that are going there for the community. And as part of that, just recently, the rehabilitation department has moved into the Atwood sites, freeing up the space for the renovation. To go into a little bit of the location of the renovation, it is above the emergency department and what it's doing is connecting two pieces of the facility which is helping us to support to achieve this cancer program. And I'm just going to jump to this one for one second. The 2,400 square feet is this area right in here. Right now, there's space over here that rehab uses and space that they used here before they moved up, but those two spaces weren't connected. This elevator core kind of, this building comes into this point. So what we were doing is adding space here to connect these two locations to get enough program, which is the 11,000 square feet for the cancer center. And as part of that, the main treatment area that we're putting in there, this building really does not have any windows on any of the sides except for the new addition. And as part of that new addition, that's where the infusion and the chemotherapy will be given to the patients. So this gave us an opportunity to get some light into that space because those people might be there for four to five hours at a time, depending on how their treatment goes in multiple days even. So that's the little red location right there between the two spaces. And what this is doing, this cancer program is bringing physicians that were out in the community, having medical office space and giving infusion care there with chemotherapy, to a central location. And this is in a location where the radiation oncology is close by, it's two floors below where the elevators are. It's going to have a coordinated aspect of this that will not only serve the infusion patients, but it'll be a cancer center portion of it. So any of the patients that are coming here for care, whether it's the surgical intervention, the first portion of it, or as they get into chemotherapy or radiation therapy, we'll have the coordinated space here that they can go to speak with nutritionists, surgeons, anybody along those sorts. That space doesn't exist right now and it sends the patient over multiple areas. So that, this will end up serving as exam rooms and infusion bays. And the big difference between this and what was formerly the rehabilitation space was that the rehab space had patients coming in for 45 minute visits, they're probably overlapping lots of cars. Right now, a lot of these patients might go to an exam room and go to an infusion bay. So there's a much reduced amount of traffic involved in this. These patients will be here for a long period of times. So I think it's a big benefit not only for Cooley Dickinson in terms of their traffic is flowing here, these are now out in the community, that'll help for the rehabilitation. And this will really start to serve as that coordinated care. This is also offering up an opportunity if somebody comes from Mass General with a specialty to help out, it gives them places where they can actually see the patients and help bring that care to the western Massachusetts. Also, we have just a few elevations, it's very, a minimal piece of this. The glass is very similar to the glazing that's in here, the white metal panel matches the surgical building that was done in 2007. And besides that, I think it's pretty much close to the extent of the project. Is there anything that I missed that you would want to include in? Don't know if anybody has any questions, I can give a little more detail on any of the aspects of it.
Questions by the board? I mean, it seems a pretty straightforward project, it's within the footprint of the building, you know, the reason it's coming in front of us is because of the size, it's over 2,000 square feet, it's barely over 2,000 square feet.
And it's recessed back in, there's actually structures in the emergency department that all comes in and forth. The big benefit to this was protecting those two spaces that would be detached and not being able to be connected. So it gives us that 11,000 square feet that they needed to achieve this.
So how many new people are you actually drawing into this?
I think it's less people because right now, the infusion patients that'll be here will be here for long periods of times. It gives them the ability to park, not only go for imaging, blood draw, any of their testing that'll be here. The rehab department that was here had upwards of 25 to 30 actual rehabilitation or a physical therapist that would work here and have patients coming in and out on a much more frequent basis. So this was really going to cut down on the amount of traffic that's in the hospital.
You mentioned parking and so forth and access. One question that came up from staff was bicycle access and lack of signage at the main entrance to storage and so forth. Can you speak to that?
Yes, actually, I think the signage is the one thing, right now we went through the facility and found the different locations. There's bike lockers that are back in here that are enclosed lockers, and there's lockers in the, or actual bike locations in different locations throughout the campus. So I think that the big thing is just labeling those or having a better signage.
Right, to direct people to the storage, right?
Correct.
So I think that at the...
I think quantity wise, I think there might be a neck in, we had to add a little bit, but I don't think it was very much, it was just more of the signage.
Right, right. I think that's what the issue was. Okay.
I don't see that it's any problem. I mean, I had a question if you really could do all of the construction without affecting any of your, and it seems that you...
Being a hostile campus, we're going to do everything we possibly can to minimize. The emergency department where it is, the front entrance, everything's going to be as kept in, close to the site and logistically worked out to minimize the effect upon anybody.
And in the end, you're going to throw in a helicopter heliport pad on top?
I wish we could, but unfortunately, it's buried in the building so much, there's not enough dogs.
Did anyone hear from the public who wishes to comment on this? No? I know, exactly.
You needed a quick one.
And your motion to oppose the public comment?
So moved.
Test, discussion, in favor? Opposed. Discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we accept the site plan for 2,400 square feet of new construction at Cooley Dickinson Hospital, 30 Locust Street, North Hampton Map ID 24A-46. With the contingency that exterior signage is added to direct folks to the bike storage.
Second.
Second, John? Any discussion? Call in favor? Opposed? There you go. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Shouldn't we have put them first?
Well, except that so many people came for the other one.
Okay, let's keep the momentum.
I'm sorry.
Next up, we have a hearing scheduled for 10 after 8 for a site plan for an additional T-Mobile antenna at 76 Main Street, North Hampton Map ID 32C-17.
Good evening, my name is Marty Cohen, I'm with Network and Building, Network Building Consulting, we're a consultant for T-Mobile as to its real estate needs. Let me just give you a description of the existing facility that we've applied for site plan review to modify. As you know, there's, the facility is located on the rooftop of 76 Main Street. There are three antennas that are concealed in closed canisters. We have equipment cabinets in the basement and the cabinets are connected to the antennas by coaxial cable at this time. Reason for the modification, and I'm sure you've gotten a number of applications from other carriers asking for upgrades, we have a similar reason here. We're deploying 4G coverage as well as using spectrum in the 700 megahertz range. Without getting into too much technical detail, this is...
Good evening, my name is Marty Cohen, I'm with Network and Building, Network Building Consulting, we're a consultant for T-Mobile as to its real estate needs. Let me just give you a description of the existing facility that we've applied for site plan review to modify. As you know, there's, the facility is located on the rooftop of 76 Main Street. There are three antennas that are concealed in closed canisters. We have equipment cabinets in the basement, and the cabinets are connected to the antennas by coaxial cable at this time. Reason for the modification, and I'm sure you've gotten a number of applications from other carriers asking for upgrades, we have a similar reason here. We're deploying 4G coverage as well as using spectrum in the 700 megahertz range. Without getting into too much technical detail, this is actually the spectrum that used to be part of UHF television, and it's very effective for two things. One is the signal travels a long way, and secondarily, perhaps of more importance in this situation is that it can penetrate building walls in higher frequency spectrum. So we find it pretty suitable for 4G service. And what we plan to do here is simply add three antennas to the rooftop, again, in the closed canisters, they'll be adjacent to existing antennas. And attached to those antennas, which you won't see, and they're very small, probably about a foot by a foot, or what we call RRU's, that stands for remote radio heads. And that's simply a device that strengthens the signal and acts as sort of a mini radio cabinet. And those will be connected with hybrid fiber cables, that's going to run in the existing cable tray where we already have the coaxial cable. Hybrid fiber essentially has faster transmission speeds, and it carries data as well as electrical power. So it's an extremely efficient way of connecting the antennas to the equipment cabinets. And that's essentially what we're proposing. You have in your package some photo sims, I personally took the photos, I don't know North Hampton very well, but I tried to go in the surrounding area, northwest corner of King and Main, northeast corner of Calvin Theater, and then one other location, I think it's called Hampton Street, south of the site, which I think gave a pretty good representation of what the site will look like. And essentially, that in a nutshell is what we're intending to do. But if you have any questions?
Did you notice that we saw one of the antennas in the earlier presentation? Same building?
Yeah.
You're paying attention.
I know. Good for you then. Any questions by the board?
I've got one. I'm looking at the diagram that just places the antennas on the rooftop.
The plan, yep.
Yeah. And, you know, what I care about is whether I can see them from the streetscape, that's my first concern.
Okay.
So I like the step back on the mostly north side and the mostly east side, I guess.
I believe so, yeah.
So the two that are closest to the edge are at the back of the building. And I'm looking for a confirmation, because there's no street orientation here.
Oh, okay, you know what, let me, let me find the plans here, so that we're talking about the same thing.
C1?
Yeah, I'm on C1.
Spare with me for a moment, I've got quite a few papers here. You know, maybe if I can just borrow your plan out of you.
Sure.
On the C1.
So the two canisters at the bottom.
That's the backside of the building.
Right, and I think you'll be able to see the backside, because there's-
Well, I took a photo from, was that Hampton Street? And, yeah. Yeah, they are visible from here.
Yeah, so my question's pretty simple, it looks like you could scoot those in some, can you?
I'm sorry, you couldn't?
Scoot them in some, can you? So that they've got the same perimeter spacing as the others.
I don't want to speak on a turn, I'll tell you what the factor is, okay, and I think it would be up to our RF engineer. It's something that we call shadowing, and you can think of it as this, you've got, my pen is the canister, okay, and this desk is the building rooftop, okay. We have a certain amount of downtime, because we want to reach the street below. What you want to be careful of is it doesn't hit the building roof. So you have to be careful how far back you go from the building edge. If you go further back, then you need a taller structure, which, it's a trade-off, that becomes more visible. So that's the concept. This is something I could inquire about, but we might have to go higher if we set that.
Yeah, we went through this same discussion on top of-
Right.
-another building downtown recently, and since these are at the back, they're not, you're not getting, you're not servicing the sidewalk, you know, there. So I would just, that would be my concern, just because we can. If you can move those in, they'll be seen less and appreciated.
Okay, I mean, I could certainly make an inquiry, and it may be that even just scooting them in another foot or so could reduce the-
Yeah, I think if you're doing it on the others, and they're the ones over the sidewalk at the street.
Right.
Paul, I read this a few days ago, so I apologize if I missed it in here, but can you talk about the material that the canisters are made of?
Oh, the fiberglass, because that's RF-friendly material, it's virtually, other than like wood louvers, like we sometimes use in church steeples, that's the only material that the signal can pass through. The advantage of it is, obviously, it can be painted to match anything you want it to.
Are these anticipated to be painted?
We'll make them the same color as existing ones.
Which are?
Hard to tell, it's sort of, sort of a grayish charcoal.
Sky blue comes to mind.
Yeah. I don't know if we want them black, you would see-
We have a lot of gray days.
Yeah, that's true, recently, anyway.
When I was here, they looked kind of grayish charcoal tone, but again, depending on the light conditions, I suppose they might look different. I mean, if you're satisfied with what we have now, and that would be our plan, just to match what's already there.
Carolyn, do you remember what we did at-
The material was going to go on a tube down the side.
Yeah, it was like a steel thing, it was whatever they presented.
Oh, the cable, right, that's already existing, what we call a cable tray, it's already there, so you're not going to see-
It's already there, you're not going to add any other, another-
We're going to add a cable, but it'll be inside the tray, you won't see it.
It'll be inside what's already there.
You won't see it, right.
So there's nothing exposed coming down the building?
Correct, right, yeah.
Nothing new.
Right.
Right.
It's like putting wire through an existing pipe, it's not going to change the appearance.
Any other?
My only concern would be, we can get them lighter, and they're less noticed, and so I think this is the time to ask for that if we do.
I agree, I mean I-
Well, for all of them, you mean?
I don't know if that's under our purview.
Well, I mean, I just wonder, so I don't know if it would make a difference, if some of them are one color, the original ones stay the same and-
You can't see them, it doesn't matter what color they are, you can do them.
Well, you can't see them, that's the issue.
You can see them, many properties are the same.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, did we stipulate when we had the issue at Thorne's? No, I have the old site plan review approvals right here.
Incidentally.
And I don't think, it might have said just in conformance with the plans, let me see here.
You guys talked about color for the other ones and decided it wasn't the way to go, because, you know, it's more, it stands out more.
Right.
I think with steel or something.
I've had my request, if you can, that's-
Okay.
Should we open up the public? Anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this? No? Make a motion to close the public?
To close the public, yes.
Second one? Any discussion? All in favor?
More legible than the-
Opposed? No? Okay. Any more discussion?
I mean, I voiced what I would like to have, I don't believe he can answer me, if it's possible.
Can you make a good faith effort, a condition?
Yeah, I mean, you could say, you could require that they be pushed back, what was it, a foot or two, is that what?
I just, the-
Without having to raise them.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so you could require that they, that unless-
There's limiting service.
Right, if they can't push it back, then they have to show why they can't push it back. But otherwise, push it back to-
As far as they can.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to propose that as a condition.
Make a motion?
I do.
You don't want to say can't push it back, I mean, anything can be done, without making it taller.
Without making it taller.
Without making, okay. That's our, I just want to be clear on what you want, so, okay.
Because it defeats the purpose.
Right.
Right, so they could, we could, you could just require that prior to issuance of a building permit, they submit documentation about the location, showing the final location, and if they are unable to move it back, then show the technical reasons why they can't, because it'll make it taller, without going taller.
I'm just, I'm swayed by the fact that the others are, and so I just think they could. I move, we approve site plan, additional T-Mobile antennas at 76 Main Street, North Hampton, Map ID 32C17, with the condition that all the antennas have the same distance from the roof edge.
From the front of the building.
That's, the ones in the back have the clearance that the ones in the front have, notwithstanding that they don't get higher to move them.
Second.
Second.
I think John got that. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? There you go. Thank you. I don't know if everybody's exhausted, and that's why these are going quickly, or, just that easy.
Hold on, I'm talking to the secretary.
Okay, next up. We have a hearing scheduled for 8:25 for a site plan by Shop Development LLC for a 2,000 square foot plus, for four, additional four residential units and two structures at 108 Grove Street, North Hampton Map ID 38C-10.
Thank you for your, uh, ring tower. Is this a delicate table?
Um, no.
It's black color, too, is that a possibility?
Well, that's, that's a projection, it's not going to get much better than that.
Okay.
We're working on a change.
That's good. I can help you.
I propose she-
Dr. David Palmer.
Hi, thank you for hearing us. My name's Dory Brooks, I'm a designer with Jones-
Target employee.
Dory Brooks.
Yep.
I'm a designer with Jones Woods at Architects in Greenfield, I'm also resident of North Hampton. Bruce Vols approached our firm last year as one of several participants in the Small Lots Big Ideas competition that was held by the city. And Bruce had a vision at that time of an alternative dwelling type in North Hampton that would accommodate both energy-efficient building practices and modernist sensibilities. And he created an organization he's calling Shop Development, Small House Opportunity Project, hoping to find sites within the city that can be developed into new models of housing that are appealing to the urban lifestyle and meeting with the city's new zoning attitude, which is trying to encourage infill of that type. We've been working for several months since developing plans for this four-unit condo development to be built at 108 Grove Street. Mr. Vols owns VCA Industries, an architectural woodworking business on Earl Street, just around the corner from the site. He's familiar with this property and purchased it in the spring of this year, and has been working hard since to clean it up from its derelict current condition. You may be familiar with the site already on Grove Street, it's been falling into disrepair for some time, and he's put a lot of work into it already. 108 Grove Street is a half-acre lot located between Grove Street and the East Hamptons for the bike trail. The neighboring wetland cannot be developed, the property is across the street from Grove Street Inn and next to a development of small apartments. The slope site, the site slopes away from Grove Street, towards the south and towards the bike trail. So the top of here, working Grove Street, the bottom is really just adjacent to the bike trail. The views of the site, then, because of that sloping, the site's really divided into sort of three terraces, a higher, middle, and lower, and currently, the current building and barn are built on sort of the middle level. The site looks towards the south, towards the Holyoke Range, and then, again, it has that wetland open area next to it, sloping away. We've tried to use the design to focus on taking advantage of the southern exposure and the views to the south that are so enjoyable in the site. The buildings are oriented to use a joint driveway, so as you see, we've kind of broken the project into, even though it's four units of condominium, we've broken it into two buildings. Each building is a mirrored replicate of the other, and the intention in this massing is to have the buildings themselves be similar to the single-family homes in the neighborhood and not overscaling in the neighborhood. Each building is then divided into two units, a lower unit and an upper unit. The design reflects some of the industrial character of the area in its materials, it's a modernist design, the exterior siding is galvanized aluminum and fiber cement board. The, the units, each building is 2,700 square feet, and the bottom is a little bit larger than the top unit. This view is the south elevation, so this would be the view you'd be looking at from the bike trail, generally speaking. This is the east site elevation, looking from, say, Earl Street, if you were directly east, but generally, if you're driving up from the corner of Earl Street and Grove. And at the moment, that is fairly tree-heavy, but there's a lot of wetland in this area, so it would be opened if you removed some of the trees, this is trying to show the actual buildings, really. This is the site if you removed, if you were not looking at the trees that are on the adjacent property. There are trees blocking between the apartment buildings next door and the site, but this is the west elevation. And I'll come back again to the, I'll just flip back to that north site elevation, looking at it directly from Grove Street. I'll come back to that again, though, so this is the street's point of view. And then each individual elevation of the building, just to go through these quickly, the east elevation, south, north. Oops, that would be north, that would be, it actually depends on which side you're looking at, that would be the west elevation, and then on the other unit would flip to be the east. So again, back to this rendering. This rendering, I think, is indicative of the attitude that the whole project is trying to take. We actually have a wonderful team working on it, including Kent Hicks, a well-known local builder, Julie Snezak from Guntlow Associates, our civil engineer, and Craig Stevens of Landscapes. Craig, really, this I like because it brings in Craig's attitude as well, which is a very organic landscape style. So rather than retaining walls, we're using boulders, we're using native plant species, and we're trying to really integrate the site and the landscape, and the buildings as much as possible. The carport houses four cars, I can go back through the site plan if needed, but it reflects the same style as the rest of the buildings. It does attempt to reuse some of the existing wood and lumber on the current barn on the site, and uses them as salvage, and then kind of incorporates that element and kind of integrates it back. So I'll leave it at that at this point, and if you have some specific questions about-
Questions by the board?
So you've provided one carport per space, per unit?
So each, no, we have, I'm sorry, to go back to the site plan, the requirement is two units, two car, parking spaces for the downstairs units, and one for the upstairs based on size, so it's six parking spaces. We have four covered and two uncovered. Is there a pointer, does this work as a pointer?
Do you have the gray thing up there?
Yeah.
There's a yellow button in the middle, that's a pointer, but you have to point at it.
At it, right?
Yeah.
Right, so those are two parking spaces that are uncovered, and with the cover area, so that, largely to kind of screen the parking area in the street, so.
And where would guests or visitors park?
They would, there is some space here, and it is possible to park cars along here if they were temporarily parked, and you could still back out based on sizing. I think ultimately, it's, it would be as same as my own driveway, you know, there's room for two cars in my driveway and additional, but at a certain point, if you had capacity, I think you could really only fit three cars along here, potentially four, but there's a slope, so you'd want to be careful about that.
Any other questions?
Did you mention bicycle parking yet, or no?
There is the parking, I don't have a plan view of the, let me see if I can give you a view. On the, on this view, behind, on the side of the parking structure, both sides, both the street side and the other side, there are vertical parking racks for bicycles, so there's a total of, if you look on the design plan for the- So it's a total of, if you look on the design plan for the carport, there's some vertical storage. And then inside the carport, there's storage per unit just for each homeowner to have some private storage. So the bicycle parking is just integrated vertically with the carport.
So that is covered?
Yes. Yes, it's covered. So the, the site does hope to encourage relationship to the bike path. This is a path that runs through the site to the bike trail at the bottom, and it's really the existing path that's on site, but we've kind of organized it, formalized it, but the grades are sort of a natural grade that we're trying to work with.
It's a dirt path.
Currently, it's not even, it's really just grass. There's a bit of a path, but it's obviously where everybody's gone. And there will be regrading, but it's a logical, comfortable grade to get down to the bike trail. And we don't continue it all the way through the site because we didn't want to make it a public, public path.
You had a strangely shaped path first in the front, in the first one of these that I saw, and it's gone from everything except the last, whatever the last one is in a second. It's, I assume it's gone.
No, it's an, well, we view it as an option. The goal, there's a, what we wanted to do is have an ADA accessible option for the first floor of this unit, so that you would not need to use stairs at all. And that grading allows for that still in this area, so that if a buyer wanted that, that option would be there, that they could put in an accessible ramp to their door as opposed to having to go down steps so that they can get from this.
It's a long winding.
Well, that's the only thing that's dramatically...
Stone or stone dust, or whatever you call.
I think that's this. That's this path, and I don't...
No, it was in the front.
We may have caught, we did at some point show a little bit at the front, and we decided that that was not a good idea to have it.
That's what I thought, that's why.
Yeah. But then we did have this little turn there that...
Yeah, no, that was, it was, it was larger than that.
Okay.
Exterior lighting, I know the photometrics, it's zero pretty much everywhere, but the lighting that is there, what does that look like?
Let me, these are the fixture cut sheets. They're dark sky compliant. The intention with the wall mount fixture is that it will, underneath the canopy, it will light up to light the canopy, and when it's not under the canopy, there's another version that does not light upward at all. The step light did, on the photometrics, kind of come in higher than it's sort of, you know, shown to be the requirement, but the step light is intended to be bright at that level, and it's within the well as you step down, so it would not be visible from the street even. It only lights towards the, towards that, so right here is a step light, and here is a step light. So it's actually a kind of a required light to really allow you to see the steps from the parking area down to the terraces. So I don't think that would be a problem to glare.
And there's nothing at the carport?
Oh, yes, sorry. The wall mount is also, there's, there's a wall mount at each entry to the building as well as at the back, and then there's wall mount lights on the carport, on the sides.
And would those be on a timer, the ones at the carport, or how would those, would those be on all night, or?
They could be. We haven't, we haven't gotten to that level of engineering, but certainly possible. Right, and I think it's often good potentially to have a motion-activated light at that location as well.
Snow removal, any, has that been thought through?
It's been discussed. The, Bruce is recommending that, he feels it's more of a snow blower situation than a snow plow situation. There, it is a bit of a tight site. Our assumption is that snow plowing, you know, we have this gap here, you know, so that you can kind of turn and pull to this area, but I think snow blowing sort of does make sense to kind of push off. It's not a very large drive area.
How many trees are coming down for this process?
I would say, so I think the plan you see in the, in the two site plans, a lot of grading is occurring, and we do have a plan that shows what we're bringing back. So most of this area, so this is existing and will remain, much of it, there's a lot of screening on this side of the property between the two apartments. This area is all kind of remaining as is, and these trees exist and will remain. And this area, because of the grading changes that have to occur, most of this will go. And it's, the property line has this sort of a line of trees straddling, and some, a lot of, frankly, to be quite honest, if you look at the existing conditions, a lot of the vegetation on the site's in very poor shape anyway, so there's going to be a lot of, even what's there is going to get looked at in terms of its general health, because some of it would be healthier if you took the tree next to it down. But Landscapes has put in place a design, I think it's quite nice, it brings in a number of river birch, service berry, and that's, that's kind of the feel you got here with some of this. I think I, I think we included a plan from Craig that gives you some idea of his intentions. He's a real sort of artist who works with the landscape, not so much with his computer, so.
Yeah, I mean, I like the landscaping, I like the massing, I like how it works with the elevations that are there instead of grading ones. I think it's an interesting project, and it's well done.
I love, I love the design.
Great.
When I want to, when I see structures like this, and see those wonderful flat roofs, I ask about green roof opportunity.
Yes, actually.
Is that under discussion?
It is under discussion, it's a budget issue for sure. Right here, these, at the end of each unit, there's a low little roof that's, I have to admit, a very strong gestural green roof that I hope we could do. The other roof in plan, I'm not sure, let's see, you see this area here where you have the balcony, that's actually an outdoor deck to the upper unit. So that, that would not be a green roof, but it could certainly, you know, it would logically end up being a plant-heavy area, but the back areas is, the top, we have it, and we've looked at it as a solar-capable roof, so we're actually sort of intending it to be prepared for that. Again, it's an owner option, and the roofs do have slope, obviously, they have a parapet that's shown, that's hiding the slope.
I'm biting my tongue to tease you about the Architecture Review Board, but it's an unusual development. You know that. What hadn't been said is it's sitting right under the back door of Cole Morgan, so in some ways, it answers that.
It does, indeed, it's really interesting there.
And it also, you know, I've always regretted that we gave them the best view of the range in town, so I'm happy you're taking back a look.
Thanks, I'm glad you noticed the connection. Yeah, we were concerned because it's not, it's not in Grove Street neighborhood, it's at the edge, so it kind of tries to straddle that relationship between the industrial and the residential.
Any other questions from the board? Open up the public. Anyone hear from the public who would like to comment? No?
I have some comments from DPW which were already forwarded on, so I just have, you don't have to keep the hearing open, but I sort of molded them into some conditions because a lot of them are detailed about stormwater. I did want to note that the applicant, I don't know if you said this, got their permit from the Conservation Commission earlier today, but they need to meet stormwater standards in the Wetlands Protection Act, and DPW did have some concerns about some soil tests that I think are probably mirrored in the notice of intent and permit that was issued. So I don't think it hurts to duplicate those, but DPW, I think most of the concerns were about just seeing the final calculations for soils, and they've got proposed rain gardens, and so they want to make sure that those, the vegetation, the rain gardens are going to work and the soils will work. And then some, I believe there's some water and sewer connection, or water connection issues. So I can just pitch those as possible conditions. You can close the hearing if you want, or wait till, you know, if you want to leave it open, it's fine.
Might as well leave it open, we can listen to them.
Okay. So, and just to say, I think, you know, we had, we worked with the applicant closely, and they responded to the issues, I think, in the zoning, so from our perspective, for the most part, except for these technical details, I think, it meets the requirements and the ordinance. So proposed conditions, prior to issuance of building permit, plan details should be revised with and submitted to this DPW with a copy to the planning office, and make sure all the details are consistent between all the plans, the stormwater plan, the notice of intent plans, and the planning board plans. Additional soil information is required to confirm infiltration capabilities. Details should also be submitted from the soil, from a certified soil evaluator or certified professional soil scientist for complete test pit data to show seasonal, estimated seasonal high groundwater elevations, and to the extent that any restrictive soils in the area of the proposed rain garden and confirm the design and function of that rain garden. Plans should be revised and submitted to the Office of Planning and Sustainability to include material of the proposed drainage pipe, the detail of the proposed catch basins with 30-inch sump, and at a minimum, catch basin in the paved area should include hooded outlet and a four-foot sump. Elevation of the outlet pipe in the proposed rain garden and plantings for the proposed rain garden. So I don't know if the cons come address that and they're fine with it without the requirements of those, but, so we can talk about that, because I don't know what happened at the Conservation Commission. The driveway should be graded so that runoff doesn't enter the roadway. And DPW would like the salvaged granite curbing to be returned to the DPW yard. A separate exterior water service shut-off and interior meter is required for each separately-owned condo unit. The applicant shall coordinate with the water department to install a new two-inch tap and curb stop at the property line and to abandon the existing service when, before the building's demolished or at the time. The proposed sewer manhole should be located as close as practicable to the property line. The proposed sewer manhole chimney for the connection to Grove Street shall be constructed in accordance with the DPW standard details. Sewer manhole on Grove Street shall be core-drilled to accept the new chimney service and connection, and the existing sewer service, which is not shown, shall be cut and capped near the property line.
Could you go back to, I think, the first one?
About...
The grading?
Provide, oh, yeah, so the driveway needs to be pitched so it drains onto the property, not so that it just drains water right into the street. So typically, you can either pitch it to the side or put a berm right at the end of the driveway so that it patches the water before it goes in the street.
Carolyn, are those just, are they working off a standard checklist? Because the whole, the whole property drains in the other way, in the direction.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I was trying to understand.
I think it's just at the drive itself.
Just the drive itself, a little bit of it, just at the back end of it, or the front end of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It still seems like it naturally will come, I guess, I guess, a little bit, I'm not understanding...
You gotta walk uphill to get to the road. Kind of.
Is that what they're, I mean, is that essentially what it's saying?
It's just curves coming down.
It's sloping down.
It slopes back to Grove.
Yeah.
No, what they're saying is, the way the drawings currently show, we have curb on both sides of the driveway, so he's suggesting that we super-elevate it a little bit more, take the curb off of one side so that the rainwater can sort of...
Doesn't funnel it out?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm, okay, that's, that makes more sense.
We also just want to mention that we got those comments today, and Guntlow and Associates actually spent the day preparing corrected drawings to address all of the...
So all of the details with the rain garden and the sewer and the water conditions. I have revised drawings with me. I don't know if you want them or if you just want to give them...
But if those were conditions to...
Then you've already done them, so.
You have no issue with the conditions by the DPW?
Right.
But it's not, you don't have to create like a dip artificially, I mean, you just have to do the, with the curbing and...
Okay.
So the only question I have for you was about this, the catch basin.
As to how it was addressed earlier today?
Yeah, did they have a similar issue for...
They did address those as staff comments, so the same, basically, they kind of forwarded on most of those issues as well.
Yeah, they were incorporated in there, I think, conditions 35, 40 or something.
Okay.
Public comment is still open.
Opposed, we...
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Any more discussion? So we, it sounds like we have two conditions, basically DPW, all those conditions, and then maybe one on the lighting for the carport, that it either be on a timer or a motion sensor or something of that nature.
I know it's late, but can I just make a comment that I know we don't have a lot of purview over, I just want to say it, though, so I love, I love the design, I love this development. I think it's, it's very challenging to be creating small condominium associations, small condominium, you know, four condominium units that, you know, that don't have a requirement for outside property management. It just, you know, I live in a condominium, I choose that, I love it, but it's just an interesting thing for us to be aware of as we see, you know, we saw a two, a two and two over on Phillips Place not long ago, that it's just something, you know, for us to be aware of, that, you know, it's kind of creating a whole other set of issues with how we use land here in town for housing. Sleep on it.
Yeah.
So what was the lighting condition?
The lighting on the carport should either be on a motion sensor or a timer so that it turns off at an appropriate hour.
So it's not on all night?
Right.
I move we approve site plan by Shop Development LLC for 2,000 square foot and four residential units and two structures at 108 Grove Street, map ID 38C-10, with the conditions stated by the DPW and the condition for lighting to be on a timer or a motion sensor.
John, keep sneaking in there. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Ready to go? Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
I know. Move we approve the next one.
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about it. See us coming down.
Are you suggesting then in the long run, we're going to be looking at, I don't think, it's just...
Yeah, I know.
Because small...
Interpersonally, when you have real estate owners.
Two to two.
Except beneficially. Pull this out. It's very difficult to self-manage. We see it in Boston and triple deckers all the time, where the whole state kind of falls apart because someone wants...
Even if it was professionally managed, they're just very problematic.
It's interesting.
All right, one more hearing left. We have some more items left, but one more hearing left, scheduled for 8:45, so a little behind. For subdivision amendment to install a water line in lieu of wells and fire suppression at Emerson Way, formerly The Oaks, Florence map ID 36-409.
Hi, I'm Mark Arnold from Berkshire Design Group. This is a project that was approved quite a few years ago. It used to be called The Oaks, and it's been changed to Emerson Way. And by, you know, essentially, all we're asking to do is to add some additional water lines and booster pump station. The map up here we show, it's, you can see, this is First Pit Road, this is the existing subdivision that's been approved. The yellow lots that you see here are serviced by the existing water main that has been installed. When the project was first approved, the lots in blue were too high of an elevation to have adequate water supply, so they were approved to be constructed with wells and also with fire suppression systems, essentially sprinklers. The proposal is to construct additional water main, which would service the blue areas, and also at the same time, put in a booster pump station, which would boost up the pressure, not only to allow the upper areas to have water for domestic, but also to have adequate water for fire protection as well, but also boost the pressure for the lots, existing lots on the yellow color lots, because they're on the marginal side of the town. The booster station would be backup with the generator, so if there ever were a power outage or a problem with that, they would still have power to run it. It'd be, the generator would be gas-powered, natural gas-powered, it'd be electric-powered generator. The pump station would be located on the emergency access road, so therefore would not be located with any of the previously approved open areas, so not any violation of the existing subdivision approval. That's really a quick scenario. met with them not too long ago to have them look at their latest plans, verbally said there was no problem. We met several times with the DPW to make sure they're comfortable with the design. They had the project reviewed by their consultant engineer, has essentially had the water model for the entire town, and they ran it through there, and they concurred, and had some comments on the project, and we're concurring with that, and actually, they looked at the model. We had originally designed a booster pump station to accommodate the water pressure as it exists today. Their consultant recommended that, let's look at the project based upon 2032, the year 2032, so it's been designed to accommodate future demands. We always had a demand, but they wanted to make sure that if the booster pump kicked on, it wouldn't cause a problem in the neighborhood, suck their water dry and cause a problem there. So that's been evaluated, it's been looked at, we have a letter from DPW to have looked at and reviewed, and this is very similar to Bear Hill Estates. I did a design, very similar to this, we put a booster pump station up there, the town is familiar with it, the fire department's familiar with it, this is not a new creature, it's been tried and true, and it's been in existence in North Hampton for a while, so I think people will understand it and familiar with what it is.
Where is?
Real quick scenario.
Where's the generator?
The generator's actually located inside the booster pump station. We have the booster pump, this is the emergency access road, which services the detention basin, and we have the booster pump station, it's actually in a building, and it'll have the pumps inside, as well as the generator inside, it'll be buffled, so it'll cut down the.
So even though it cycles once a week, or whatever, from a sound standpoint, it won't be.
During daytime, wouldn't do it at 3:00 in the morning, would do it at 1:00 in the noon. Just to keep the neighbors happy.
But it's enclosed?
It's enclosed, it's, everything's within inside the same building.
So how many lots do you have there?
Total number of lots?
Fifty-nine.
How many?
Fifty-nine total.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine total lots.
Okay, so Bear Hill had a water pump problem, and the top hills last time were having water problems. So what happens if one of these things goes out?
There's actually three pumps inside this pump station.
Yeah, there weren't the Bear Hill one, too, as far as I understand.
Yeah, I'm not aware that they had a problem with the water pressure up there.
Okay. Just saying.
It's a mechanical scenario, there's a potential for something to happen, and when it happens, they need to address it. I mean, it's designed, it's worked, so if there's a mechanical problem, I'm assuming it was addressed, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was, but I just, it's a very similar situation.
Yes, it is.
Who maintains it?
The homeowners association will be maintaining it. Hampshire Property Management Group is still the primary owner of the subdivision, but as they get enough homeowners in there, they would create a homeowners association, they would be responsible for maintenance of the pump station.
That's, one of the comments, or the only comment from staff, was that the homeowners association, the language be amended to reflect that the maintenance is owned by, by the homeowners association. So that will be done. So is there currently one now, or once you reach a certain level, one will be created?
I'll let, I'll bet you. Mark, one will be created, we're near that level right now, it's 15, and we'll pass that in the next six to 12 months.
So for the sake of argument, in the next three to five months, if there's an issue, well, I'm just playing devil's advocate, if there's an issue, and there's not, homeowners association is relative to the maintenance, how is that addressed?
The developers, actually Emerson Way LLC, it's not Hampshire Property Management Group there, we're the property management agent. Emerson Way LLC will address any shortfalls.
Let me just clarify, there is, and so, there are covenants and restrictions already recorded, and has, and identifies the mechanism of, at what point the developer shifts everything over. So all of the documentation is on record at the registry deeds, so for all the other maintenance issues that go along with this subdivision, because all of this is private, actually, all the infrastructure. So that's already, the framework is already there, the details are already there, this would be going in and adding.
Right, so this is a new maintenance item, that's not addressed yet, but that language will be included.
And the only, the issue is, though, there are existing owners in the property, so, you know, they're, they're, they have to, you know, they have to figure out how they're gonna get the documents changed on those owners' lots.
And this is more of a technical matter, DPW signed off on it, so I think ultimately it's a better system than exists now, but. Questions from the board? Open up to the public? There's not much left, not many people's left standing. No comments from the public?
We have a way of wearing them down.
I know, I know. Motion to close?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Second, doesn't? Discussion? So the only condition we would have was that the HOA documents would be amended, assign the maintenance responsibilities of this change to the, the HOA.
And then just to also, Langwood, DPW wants to review those before they're recorded, to make sure the documents accurately reflect what needs to be reflected in terms of maintenance.
So the amended documents, A, the documents have to be amended, B, they have to be reviewed by DPW.
I have to trust DPW on these things, I mean, that's just the bottom line on it. There is just a nagging side of me that says you start segmenting a water system into private pieces that hook onto the public system, and I really hope they're, that I'm trusting them to review all of the implications of that in the future.
This is a long discussion.
Okay, I need a motion.
I don't know if it's over.
I move we, that the subdivision amendment to install water line in lieu of wells and fire suppression at Emerson Way, formerly The Oaks, Florence, map ID 36-409, be approved with the condition that the condominium documents reflect it.
The HOA be amended, and that DPW sign off on it.
Thank you, that's what I meant to say.
Second.
Second, any, any discussion?
Yeah, I think you may want to specifically say the condominium documents, because it's not, let them decide which of the many documents have to be amended.
Right, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thanks, Mark, thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of quick items.
Did they leave that behind? I was thinking of that, it ended up at the end of the line, I should, make a mental note to give them a heads up and.
That was a.
The presentation, the first presentation.
Oh.
With the department.
I think Dan wants to take a.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You think?
Do you use that workman?
All right, so we got a couple of things, I don't have minutes for you, I was working on it late today, it was quite good. So, did you guys, I hope you all got the quick email about Scanlon Drive Avenue, I can't remember. So this is probably the tail, we're getting to the tail end of the list of streets that were never made public. You saw Scanlon goes from Florence, and is that little shortcut list. DPW has made all sorts of changes on that street along the way, without realizing that it wasn't a public street for them to make changes on. So we're kind of, we need to correct that, but from, you know, it acts, I mean, our recommendation would be that it makes sense to be a public street, because it's part of the fabric of the, the network of streets in that area, so that's certainly our recommendation. Board of Public Works has voted on it to recommend to city council, so city council's just waiting for what you all might say about it.
In, in the past, when we've had a lot of discussion, if there was any ambiguity at all, we, we wouldn't even take, we would just push it off to the DPW, say that's, you know, that's really enough for us to say that's DPW, no, we don't comment on it in any way. For those roads that were clearly streets, we would say that's a street, and we'd vote in recommendation of that. I think this falls to that line, it's a street.
Yeah.
And it's, it used to be a two-way street, and then now it's a one-way street, DPW's made changes to it because they thought it was a street. Then they find out it's not, and so I would recommend that we, the board, approve it as a street.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So we're recommending the council to accept it as a street. All in favor? Opposed?
Who made the motion?
Mark did, a second.
Okay. Okay. So now.
Carolyn.
The explanation's gonna be longer than the actual, okay.
Oh, this is a good one.
So I have two approval-not-required plans, and.
So why are we, so why are we approving?
Exactly.
Listen, that's a good.
Most of you know, some of you know what these are, some of you don't. These we had been doing, so approval-not-required means subdivision approval under the subdivision law is not required to create, to carve up a new lot, and the reason why it might not be, subdivision might not be required is because the parcel exists on a public way, or a way that has been, provides adequate access, or was built before the subdivision rules, and so forth. This has always been, for decades, has been an administrative action, that a planning board member has been designated as someone to come into the office and sign off on the A and Rs, to say, there is a specific process you have to go through to create these lots on existing streets, if you have and you meet the adequate frontage requirements for those streets. Then the rules changed, and the planning board could designate staff to do the endorsement. So then staff started doing these. We recently discovered that we were interpreting the rules a little bit differently than they should be interpreted, and really, the planning board needs to vote that it is an A and R plan, and then anybody can endorse it, any designate from the planning board. So I'm here with two A and Rs for you to look at, and I'm gonna describe them quickly, and then you guys need to take a vote and say, yes, that's an A and R, and then I can sign them in the office and send them on the review.
So every time there's an A and R submission, it needs to come up here for discussion?
We have to approve that approval's not required.
Right. And it happens in a lot of small towns, because there isn't staff, it always gets to, you know, they get put in a pile to go to the planning board for the next planning board meeting, but, you know, for years and years, over 25 years, we've just been doing it in the office, we call a planning board member, or more recently, just staff has been doing it. And that's not the right way, so we want to correct that. So, so the first one is on Con Street, is that okay? Do you have a question?
It is, although you actually meet, so there is an option possibly that a planning board member can do that as opposed to the group?
No. That's the way we had been doing it, that's the way we had been doing it.
Right, okay.
And that's not.
All right, go ahead, Con Street.
So Con Street, they, actually, both of these are a result of the change in the zoning to reduce the frontage. So on Con Street is urban residential C, there's an existing house, and they had just over 100 feet of frontage, so, and the house happened to be shifted over to the side, so they've created another rectangular lot with a minimum 50, actually, it's, yeah, one of them will be 57 feet of frontage, the other one 50 feet of frontage. It meets the minimum lot size, although we, technically, that's not what's under consideration for approval-not-required plans, only frontage. So this one's Con Street. Do you want to take a vote on that one?
Want to vote? All in favor?
Okay. And the next one is in, actually, you are A, on Vernon Street, sort of right on the edge of urban residential B and A, off of Elm Street, and similar situation, there's a dwelling that's on the, it's on a really large lot, actually, 20,000 square feet, an extra frontage, the house was situated in a way that they could still meet the setback and create a second, almost 10,000 square foot lot. 55 feet of frontage for the new parcel, the existing, the house, the existing house on the parcel would have probably twice that amount of frontage. So, that's that one.
I move we approve them. From Vernon Street.
Okay.
Second? Tess, all in favor?
All right.
That house on Vernon Street, even though the wedge of the lot, it still needs to be up, facing, it needs to be in the street line, right?
Right, it still needs, and any new house would still need to meet the design standards, this is just to create the lot, so this is sort of step one of that process.
You could see that that lot lent it, lent itself to doing this.
Mm-hmm. Drops off a whole lot at the back, it would be tempting to put the house at the back.
If you want to accept all that water into your.
Yeah, right. It's 10.
And that's it.
Twenty-nine and a half.
I'm just counting.
I know. Do I have a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Second? Tess, all in favor?
Go.
Okay.
Time to go.